Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to commit the whole meeting on Tuesday, March 14th. And Councilor Frye is still talking. And we're meeting today on the traditional territory of Squamish Nation. Looking for motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilor Kent, seconded by Councilor Frye. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. First up, we have Copper Coil, lease extension. And Les McDonald, come up, let's see. Anyone who touched the table, it's very inclusive.
Yep. Anyways, thanks for taking time here. I know I've got 10 minutes, so my goal is to be under 10 minutes, for sure. As you guys know, the Copper Coil Still and Grill has kind of a... It's turned into a maiden Squamish success story. And what's interesting about the restaurant is that we do have a lease with the District of Squamish, which when we first negotiated our lease, we can only get five years because the district still didn't know what strategic plan was for that property. So that has been great. We were excited to get those five years. But now that the restaurant's been a success for year one, it's attracting attention from all over the place. So I'd like to introduce you to Kurt Mativier. He's from Vancouver. He was a person who actually drove to Whistler and stopped in Squamish for gas quite often, but then started coming to the Copper Coil because he found an interesting place in Squamish that could stop and have a good bite to eat and had character. So I'll make it long story short, there's a real strong possibility that Kurt and I will work together. And we want to improve and enhance the Copper Coil even further. So I'm going to play a video for you. I'll let you watch the video because the video has a lot better speaking than I am. And I'll just hit play. I'm Les McDonald, and I'm the owner of the Copper Coil Still and Grill. It's hard to imagine, but mere three years ago, this restaurant didn't exist and the corner of Cleveland Avenue and Victoria Street were a lot different. One of the challenges that the District of Squamish has been trying to overcome, along with the Downtown Business Improvement Association, is drawing people downtown, not having them stop at gas stations and grab the Whistler, but rather find a draw to get people downtown. When I first saw this little space across the street, I had a vision for the Copper Coil, and I knew that we could attract not only local visitors, but people from around the world. This building was not exactly set up for restaurant success. It's a small building with a very, very tiny footprint. We've only got 38 seats inside the restaurant, and thanks to the patio extension we put on, we can actually get another 50 people on that deck in the summertime. We are here today to ask you for lease extension on this property because we've got some big visions for how we can make this property more useful on a year-round basis. If you look at the letter that you received from the Downtown Business Improvement Association, we support our bid to get a longer lease. The reasons are obvious. Downtown is becoming a vibrant, busy place. Do you remember what this corner was like when we started renovations? We had a lot of work to do. The other side of the building did not have a deck. There were no garage doors. And the inside of the building required major renovations to get it up to code. We had to make the wheelchair accessible. We had to change the washrooms. The entire restaurant needed a major overhaul. We also had to rearrange things, try to get more seats in there. As it stands, there are only 38 seats in the restaurant. In the summertime, with our deck, we can actually get another 50 people up there. But that's weather dependent. So what we're hoping to do is do another major investment on the property in lease improvement. We want to put a retractable roof system on the deck, and that's going to allow us to put the roof out on rainy days and even drop down vinyl signs with heating to make it comfortable year-round. This is going to allow us to have more capacity in the restaurant and have a better chance of being a continued Squamish success story. Success stories like the Copper Coil Still and Grill employ 29 people in the winter time and 39 people in the summertime. That's a lot of employees. These are people that no longer have to go on the See the Sky Highway and commute back and forth to the city every day. This creates revenue and employment in Squamish, but it also creates a much higher quality of life. The Copper Coil Still and Grill is attracting all kinds of attention from all over the world, including that of Hollywood. We've recently been filmed in a Jeep Cherokee commercial, and we've been in a film called A Fun-Putting Mystery starring Allison Sweeney. One of my favorite people in the world came here for lunch, David Suzuki, and we've had the American Bob's Run team in here as well. Someone's filming here this morning, and apparently a resident of Squamish has come and says she wanted to do a photography along the Copper Coil. And what are you doing, by the way?
I'm here, Robyn. Oh, well, I've been in Squamish since November, so you know, it's solid, what is it now? March?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, been so busy with the baby, but we have gone to Copper Coil a couple of times, and it's been awesome. You know, it's... We've been able to bring our five-year-old. You know, delicious food, really good service. And my favorite part is that it's downtown, and you know, it's really making Cleveland a happening place. I think it says, you know, we want people to come and stay and enjoy because Squamish is like so wonderful.
Okay, I look forward to seeing you back. Thank you. That's great. Thanks to all the hard work that the District of Squamish has been doing with all of the downtown improvements, the events, the lifestyle and the vibe, things are really picking up downtown. We look forward to being a part of that.
Good job, Les.
Thank you. Thank you. So as you guys probably already know, you've got a letter from the Downtown Business Improvement Association, which really appreciate that they're kind of supporting us in our bid to get a longer lease extension. And we're trying to get another seven years added on to our lease. Traditionally, in a restaurant, a 10-year lease would be a pretty normal lease. We're trying to get the seven years added on because we want to invest probably about another $80,000 on that patio renovation. In order for us to do that, we need to take the question mark off at the end of our... Because we've only got three and a half years left on our lease as it stands. We'd love to do that. We can have more people on a year-round basis enjoy the patio. And we're just really excited about investing further in downtown and keeping things happening.
Any questions through to Neil? In terms of the process on leases, like typically, this wouldn't come back for renewal until it's at the end of the lease, but can you just maybe walk council and maybe through the process of lease renewal or lease extension?
Sure. So the... Much like with the way we rejigged our lease and license process, we're treating this almost like it's, in a sense, a new disposition for a longer period of time. So we've asked Les to come in and make a presentation in the public meeting that she has today. And if council wants to explore this extension further, then we'll go away as staff and we'll pull together a report, come back to council with some ideas and some recommendations on what that could look like. Add later.
Counselor.
Yeah, just to be clear, so this would be seven on top of the five, or is this seven on top of the three that has expired?
Exactly. Seven on top... So we have three and a half years left on the lease, so we're essentially trying to get our seven added on now, so we're trying to get a 10-year lease.
10, not 12.
Yep.
Any other questions at this point? So at this point, Neil, are you looking for a direction from council to say, yeah, we're open to considering this, bring back options?
Yeah, just whether you want staff to work on putting a report together to come back to council. And in that report, with the options and analysis and such at that point in time.
Counselor. Yeah, I move that, like, see your report. Move by Counselor Oates, seconded by Counselor Rayes, that council is open to exploring lease extension and looking for staff to bring back options.
Sounds good.
Any more questions to the motion or to Les? Counselor.
So the parking, is the parking included? Is the parking a part of our thing, or is it included in the lease?
So right now, the lease right now that sits has them taking the... Basically, all of the property frontage along Cleveland, going back towards Lager's Lane, except for the parking area and behind the patio area, which was excluded because they weren't going to be doing that, meaning their lease. So as part of the renewal, we would revisit that and see if that's still broken or not, and then address that and have a conference next discussion. And we would look at lease rates and everything would be... For the extension, it's starting over again, effectively, so.
And if I can add to that, one of the agreements we made with the parking is because the farmer's market is next door, they wanted to have access to those parking spots on Saturdays, and we're completely open to keeping that going for as long as we're there. So we really support the farmer's market, we're really getting a good parking.
So sorry to leave it, so the parking was included in the original lease?
Without putting the area, I think a picture's worth a thousand words. There's some of the parking. The parking directly behind the building was included in the original lease. The parking behind the patio area was not.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a little strip here that's... We'll get all the maps. Not staff will come back with all the maps, and so we can understand that.
Thank you.
It's rare that a restaurant in Cleveland actually has its own parking lot. It's the last one.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't see any more hands, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, if any, motion carries. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next up, for one, active transportation projects and paving projects in 2017. Just in anticipation to be doing active transportation first and paving second, are we talking, this is going to be an integrative conversation? What will the staff say?
The intention is that we'll discuss the active transportation projects before we do the paving.
If I may, I'd like to just start out by acknowledging a little bit of the cycle of life and the environment in the engineering department. This is Beth's last council meeting, her last day is this Friday. And this is also Josie Anne Royd, or Josie's first council meeting. Josie's our new engineering tech, our new Sam, if you want. So welcome, Josie.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Just while I introduce today's presentation, I'm going to ask that we have one of these round. There should be one for everybody, so please do so. So I'm Beth Efforts, Sustainability Coordinator for the District of Squamish, and today we have a team of staff with the intention of really being more of an interactive workshop, ask them questions, and we provide adequate responses. So I'll move forward, and like I said, I'll do a quick introduction just around active transportation, how it aligns with our current OCP and council's strategic priorities. And then we'll move into our discussion around actual project selection and open the floor to questions or comments or ideas from council, and then on to paving. Also, you'll notice on the handouts, there's been minor changes. I've just added a few additional projects that have come to our attention since the report to council went in. And there's some space at the bottom there for any council members who'd like to add projects, and we can include that in kind of a working spreadsheet I have later on.
While you're flipping sites, let me just add that this is one of the first ones of these that we've done, and this is a response to feedback from council that if we come in with a tender, it's too late. It's on or off. And so in some portfolios where there's a lot of judgment to girls, such as this, we wanted to come in for an early check-in. At the same time, we wanted to come in and say, hey, what do you guys want to do? And try to have a meeting, an efficient meeting about that. So we spent a lot of time, and Beth will go over who the team was, we spent a lot of staff time with various departments and internal stakeholders, obviously informed by the Active Transportation Plan and staff priorities, to come up with an above-the-line, below-the-line, and have sort of a structured discussion, so. I think we're also open to... We'd like to have your feedback at the end of this on how you like the format, and we'll see this as an ongoing thing for some of these portfolios later.
It's a really important piece to make sure that projects come up, the projects for...
Great. Thank you, Chris. So as far as introductions, we've got Kerry Hamilton here from planning, Laura Prinsic, musical engineer, Josie Anne, who's going to introduce as our new engineer tech, Mr. Matt Simmons, and Jessica. And together, we've worked on these projects, and like I said, it's been a good learning experience for staff, and we hope that it's also a learning experience for council as we go ahead. So go over the objective, recommendations, some background information, and then, like I said, starting with active transportation, have some conversation around the proposed design work that is listed on the sheets provided. Then on to project selection and having that discussion with council, open to any ideas, paving discussion, and then finalizing those recommendations and making sure it makes sense to everybody at the table in addition to the minute taker. So the objectives really are just presenting the options prior to commencement of the 2017 tender process. At least from the staff perspective, it's been a good learning experience thus far, and we hope that it can be for council as well. Staff from multiple departments will share rationale regarding project selection, and questions can come to me, and I can direct them to the best staff representative. And council can bring attention to items they believe should be reprioritized or added to the list. So just to start out, I want to kind of remind us that we are trying to get to a list of projects that we can begin the tendering process on, recognizing that we may have to go back and do initial work, but the ideal circumstance would be that we can leave today at staff and get started on that tendering process to make sure the projects are, you know, complete within the window and before it's too disruptive for back-to-school season, et cetera, et cetera. So a bit of background, we've kind of really started focusing a lot on active transportation in recent years with that safety to school program starting in 2015, moving into that active transportation plan that was approved in 2016, and now we have those documents and that programming in place to kind of help guide us. From those, I guess, projects, we have a lot of recommendations and a lot of work has been brought to staff's attention, so now it's really about prioritizing that and having it make the most sense moving forward and combining with capital projects that are coming up, paving, et cetera. So really, it does require the staff to work together to come up with a list that makes the most sense. In addition, Josie Anne and Matt have used the pavement management study that was completed in 2010 to guide their selection for paving in addition to upcoming additional, sorry, capital works. And so currently, we have a couple of projects coming down the pipe and a lot of development activity, which I'm sure council is aware of. So active transportation is kind of with... It's really throughout. Our current OCP as our road reconstruction, so we just wanted to highlight, of course, in our upcoming OCP, we've done increased work on that front, and will be more policies included. And then for council's priorities, a strategic plan alignment, healthy communities, and including considerations for active transportation in all kind of capital works. So that's really what we're trying to work on today, maximizing the built environment and really ensuring that we're working towards a connected community.
Did we get a drone?
We did not. This came from a private source. So for rationale, we have a lot of information to work with, and really, it's about balancing those priorities as outlined. The safety to school, recommendations have come to three elementary schools, and last year, we did focus a lot of work close to one school, and now we're kind of trying to figure out what's best for additional schools. And then in addition to that, we have the three other schools coming. So some of these recommendations might be kind of light in the Brockville-Balickup area, and that is because we really wanted to have that input from residents before we made the recommendations to those neighborhoods. Not to say that we can't, and we do have some recommendations for improving safety in the areas around those schools, but really, the intention is that we'll have a more informed process moving forward. And then, of course, we've included upcoming capital works of water main, sanitary works, paving, and upcoming developments. Okay, so to start, I do think it's best if we discuss some of the design work, just because we have Kerry Hamilton and Lauren here. And before we start, I've just added one little photo there on the bottom right-hand corner, and that is an image of a tough curb, we call them, or curbs that we have ordered and we do have here in the district to be installed along kind of high conflict corners on government roads specifically, and we have a few other kind of problem corners. So we have them, and we're really waiting for the roads to be clean and cleared before we can install those. So that is something that we are excited for safety improvements along government road, and we could see more of, but really, we're kind of piloting this treatment to see what impact it has. So I wanted to say that before we move into the design conversation. So staff have identified five design projects that they would like to see move forward, one being the Government Road Corridor, which is how I've been referring to it, which is really government and Queens. We also have Buckley on the list, which is generally part of that corridor, but it requires a little bit of a different design approach. So we have Government Road Corridor, Pemberton Avenue from the underpass to Third Avenue, again Buckley, and then lighting on the corridor trail for what could be Phase Two from Finch to the Adventure Center. So I think at this point, if it's okay with staff and council, I will probably open up the Florida conversation around design before we move on to the actual project selection.
On the design aspects, any questions? I suspect there's lots. We haven't touched on a whole bunch of things, but I think we're all really excited to get these out in strategic locations. When would we see the design?
I think I'm going to leave that to Lauren.
As soon as possible. I mean, as soon as like work permits for me to handle that. And then what's going to happen, what's extra good about doing these designs is there, we're going to do a subdivision and development control bylaw update, so these will get tied into that as well, so that going forward, when developers come to discuss their frontage requirements, we'll be like, here. And yeah, so there's a really good synergy with this being part of active transportation and also part of the update of the bylaw.
So before we start budgeting for next year, these designs will be?
Ready. And in the meantime, developers can use them to do their own designs.
I think that's excellent work, and brilliant, amazing as well. I'm wondering about, in the policy piece, and I'm sure we'll see a lot of it tonight, is setbacks and everything else for bike lanes and making sure that we're tying the... I'm absolutely positive that you're already doing this, but just ensuring that, you know, frontages and everything, like buildable space, is taken into account with frontages, and making sure that we're not making every single road a bike lane, although I would like that, but like really keeping to help people move around the city. I think we're sort of in the absence of... We have an active transportation plan, but we still don't really understand how people move around the community as far as, you know, combining the truck route and the active transportation route and the transit. We know what routes are congested with trucks in the downtown, but we don't know how people move around.
We're... I think we're just going to talk about the design stuff. We're going to have a whole conversation about all the stuff that we just brought up. Just don't want to preempt the stuff yet, but...
I think that the design is impossible to talk in isolation of the design unless you're talking about...
And it's hypotheticals now because they're being developed and they're going to be brought back and they're going to be in subdivision by the control. Okay, so let's move on. Hope you thought...
Thank you. So now we'll move on to the proposed projects as outlined. My first slide, and I do recommend referring to the sheets because once it's up here, the text is very small and therefore illegible. So the next slide will be for our proposed projects that are...
This is so big.
I know. I tried to keep it on one page. So these are the projects that staff have identified as above the line at this point. So I thought we could just walk through the projects that are above the line and then go to those that are below the line in addition to the few that have come in since the report was provided to council. So the number one project, and it's highlighted on your sheet in a light orange color because it is related to other capital projects, so it's important to consider that in our next conversation with paving. If you bump one, it ultimately will affect the other project. So the first one is lighting from Lager's Lane from Finch to Centennial. This was highlighted as one of the top priorities from members of the public during the active transportation planning process. So we have included it here with split costs between roads and active transportation. The second, if... Oh, yes. And sorry, what's it called? Black fiber.
If they have questions about specific ones, you want us to?
I think it might be easiest for staff to address the questions if they come in one by one based on a project.
Well, I have a question about the first one.
Okay, that's what we're here for.
Yeah. I know we talked about this in our ride-along too, and I know there's some differing opinion about exactly how to provide adequate light for pedestrians on the corridor trail while not broadcasting light everywhere and making a non-dark sky. So what does this look like as it's presented?
Do you mind taking that one?
So similar to what we discussed when we're riding around, is it's a combination pool that would have one lighthouse that shines on the corridor trail and the other one that provides streetlight. So that's why we did half and half on the breakup of the costs and budgets, is that there are currently no streetlights at all on Lager's Lane in that area. And with all the increased density and the complaints that we get from people running stop signs and not seeing things, that we wanted to take advantage of the work for the cabling footings and have that design completed already. And the component that we're talking about with dark fiber is just part of the digital strategy and some of these missing links that we have for a potential future system between the district facilities, that we would leverage that opportunity to be in the ground there and ensure that we can cable all the way through. And that would be... There's a number, and we can touch on them, but we're working closely with the IT department on identifying where these kind of real strategic connections for them, and the efficiencies that come for just adding another piece of conduit in the ground while you're already there is actually probably the best value they'll ever get for getting.
I don't think anyone argues that. I'm curious about, so would the lighting, the new lighting structures be on the east side of that part of the highway? And then you'd have one light going over to the road, and would we like to allow it to the trail?
Yeah.
And is that going to be adequate to light the trail properly to winds and...
Yeah, so there's... So the foundations for the lights go on the west side of Lager's, the east side of the corridor trail, so that kind of vegetated boulevard that's in between them two. And we've been trying to design the lighting levels on the corridor trail to meet, you know, lighting standards in Canada, and you know, we've... The electrical engineer that's done the design has modeled them both for the road and for the corridor trail, and is confident that he can beat that.
We're not putting big corals over the road. We're doing something low-level, lower-profile lights.
Well, they're LED, so you know, these are all LED fixtures, so you don't get as much light pollution under an LED versus a high-pressure sodium-type fixture, that kind of more orange, yellowy light.
There is a lot of spill, obviously, of course, and it needs to be...
Yeah. And so that is part of the work that we've done, absolutely.
Any questions on this one?
The next identified is the underpass improvements, the Pemberton Avenue underpass, and improving the connection to Highway 99 for pedestrians through what we currently refer to as the hole in the fence. The underpass improvements came to us as recommendations.
I vote we keep that name.
Maybe a formal name. The underpass improvement recommendations came from, well, members of the general public, but also from a group of grade five students. We took their from Squamish Elementary, and they included increased lighting, widening the pathway, having some public art. The lighting has been installed and is quite bright. The... A group of students from the alternative school have put an application to put a mural on the underpass with some public art, and widening would be done as part of this project. And then that connection, that pedestrian connection from Highway 99 is kind of yet to be figured out, but staff will kind of focus more on that portion as we have been doing some work for the underpass.
And just one more, that's another real critical dark fiber connection, and we're already, we were able to put conduit in on the Rose Park project as well, so we're kind of adventure center all the way to the underpass. This would provide another link underneath the highway, which will be really good value while we're there.
Any other questions on this? Do we have any idea when MOTI is going to come back with a property design? I mean, we've written up for a while of to allow for that. How's it coming along with that?
Specific to Cleveland 99 or the underpass?
Well, the connection, because wasn't part of it coming under the underpass and allowing a path to go up through the hole in the fence and along the highway to the Cleveland intersection? So kids could get to school.
So we continue to work with MOTI on that, and we'll keep you informed.
How many times?
They have said that they will allow us to formalize that hole in the fence now.
They have.
So that's a big step forward. They talk very carefully.
And the others, go ahead.
Yeah, and throughout some of these above-the-line items, we've really only included those that we have permission to pursue at this point. Some of the below the line, we need to work with property owners and whatnot, but these ones above the line, we can ultimately begin work on as soon as possible. So item three, the Depot Road from Peterson to Dogwood, sorry, that's listed as a short-term priority in the active transportation plan and will no doubt come as a recommendation of the safety to school program once we do the Brockville Walkabout, which is tomorrow afternoon. We hear from members of the public.
Thursday afternoon, in line.
Thursday afternoon? I'll double-check that. Okay, Thursday afternoon. Good. So we have currently bike path on one side, and it's not consistent along the south side, so this work would be combined with paving, capital works, water main, and would allow us to have a consistent bike lane on both sides of... us to have a consistent bike lane on both sides of Depot Road. Questions on that one? Thank you. And the next is Garibaldi Way, Garibaldi Way at Skyline and Diamond, relatively high-traffic area. This is a recommendation from the Sapers to School program as well. What we would like to do is provide wrapping on the southeast and, sorry, southwest and northeast corners. It's kind of, it's not a straight intersection, so it's a bit of an odd configuration. And in addition to actually adding, it did happen in the original report, it said that the beacons haven't been installed, they haven't been installed, but we have them in stock because we're waiting to see if this project moves ahead rather than installing twice. So this would really be pedestrian improvement sidewalk, or sorry, crosswalk, sidewalk, wrapping, and beacon installations. Any questions on that one? The next would be the Boulevard between Skyline and Highlands Way South. This is also in relation to a capital project for Water Main and would provide a much improved pedestrian environment as you approach the roundabout at Highlands Way South and the Boulevard. And it's one of the busier small sections of the Boulevard as it links Skyline to Highlands Way South and upwards. That would be a sidewalk improvement, sorry, to the south and north side of that. Okay.
Yeah, so if you can just visualize the roundabout at Highlands Way South, on the north side, when you, when you're gonna go down to Saint of Fridel, there's a curb there, but no sidewalk. On the south side, there's nothing between Skyline and Highlands Way South. So this project utilizes on the north side between Fridel and Highlands Way South Roundabout, a sidewalk to set back behind the existing curb, because there's currently nothing. And then on the south side provides curb gutter sidewalk between Skyline and kind of interface back to the sidewalk there and provides a refuse in the middle of the Boulevard for people with a crosswalk as well, because currently there's nothing there.
I do have also the ability to pull up the web maps if we need to reference.
That would be really, I'm looking at it on my computer, but it'd be helpful for everyone if they zoom in on those kinds of things.
Yeah, and I'm having trouble doing this project by project. I prefer to actually hear about all the projects because, you know, when I look at active transportation, I prefer to focus on...
I don't think we're saying yes. I think they're just looking for clarification, pardon, I mean, clarification questions? I think we evaluate them all together, but if there's, if we're on a project and you want some clarification, yeah, we're not saying yes to anything yet or no to anything yet.
Yeah. So here you see the project, this is Skyline Drive, and you have just a gravel shoulder connecting here. We do have cro, sorry, sidewalk just around the roundabout, but it ends here and is consistent to wrap around the corner. So this is a really high-traffic area, drink vehicles turning right off Skyline and entering the Highlands. And on the other side, you can see we have complete sidewalk on the north side just around the corner, and then it turns into a gravel shoulder, although on that side we do have that curb gutter.
Okay, and then just, and then, so you get a crosswalk across here, a crosswalk across here with pedestrian refuse in the Boulevard, and that leads over here. So you turn this into, you know, a four-way kind of pedestrian access off of Skyline and the other part of the Boulevard. And so the, the big reason why we're putting this one forward is we've got a fairly substantial water capital project to do as part of this year's project, and we are gonna, we're gonna be making a mess here big time. So we've got a substantial project to do, and it makes sense to set the curb in there because once you repave, if you don't have curb to put it to, then you, then the grades for the road, it's really hard to come back and do it later.
It, it's great if you can outline if it's connected with another capital project.
Yeah. So yeah, the, on the sheet, those that are outlined in orange are related to capital projects, so let's just see if I can pull up. Is it on this screen?
We have it on the sheet.
Okay. So the next project is number six, Brackendale Neighborhood Routes. So this is something that we haven't ultimately experimented with, and in many municipalities, it's an opportunity for traffic calming. It's different paint and signage and generally lowering of speeds on these neighborhood routes, just to make them more attractive to those that are traveling by active means, but also safer. In addition, we have number seven, which is the Valley Cliff Neighborhood Route. The Brackendale Route was identified through the active transportation plan and will likely be touched on the walkabout again, but the, as was the Valley Cliff Route. And the Valley Cliff Route actually follows Hemlock, which is the route that we did on our walkabout, and we have since learned that many students use that route to access Valley Cliff Elementary through the backside. So for that, for those items, it really would be paint, signage, and working with RCMP regarding speeds, lowering of speeds.
But those six and seven are both anticipated to be part of safe routes to schools?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, they're to be determined just because we haven't received the action plans from those schools, but they have been identified in the active transportation plan and staff suspect that they will be confirmed once we complete the walkabouts.
And we did do the walkabout of Valley Cliff, but it was, I think it was pretty obvious.
Number eight, Government Road from Malcolm Bridge north, the existing sidewalk at Shannon Estates. This is another project that would be combined with Capitol Works for Water Main work.
Just along that stretch, the bridge there, I know that's extremely challenging and anything that we have come up there is gonna be fumbled into that area. The, the giant cement curb isn't large enough to put a chariot through to, if you go up on the bridge there. I know that because the metal guards on the thing, it doesn't fit. So is there anything that you think that's an extension of that project? I know that it's all dug up right to the bridge, and on the other side of the bridge, it's all dug up?
Direct that one to Ina.
So currently, we're, we're in there working on Centennial with the lighting and extending the three meter sidewalk right into the bridge, so we've already removed the concrete barriers that were on the south side. And this project would remove them from the north side, and we've been leveraging some good structural fill from other projects to kind of reduce those costs. And specifically, this one was included, and we discussed it in council as part of the active transportation phase two of last year, but we didn't proceed due to budget constraints. But we have met, and globally, we've met with ICBC on the proposed project list for this year, and we do have support from them, and we'll continue to see some funding opportunities with them, but they're reluctant to commit until we're sure of what the projects that we're gonna be pushing forward.
So that includes bridge?
It does not include, so I think if we're talking about barriers leading up to the actual bridge, then I think that can, that can be solved through these projects. If you're talking about actually widening a bridge, that is not something that...
The sidewalk on there.
Yeah. Likely, it would be really challenging to do without some fairly serious engineering. You know, I think the challenge of ensuring that you can have a reasonable-sized lane that's there for the driveline as well as the sidewalk, I mean, anybody that's looked at that knows that the fog line across the bridge is only about a foot and a little bit wide, so we're a bit constrained there.
Is there a way to paint, to just use paint to make it a shared road then? Like, even if you go back, even if it's just with paint, the road can be shared, but unless it's actually designated as shared, people often get angry at cyclists for coming out onto the road because they see the sidewalk, but pedestrians and cyclists don't sit on the bridge. If we could designate it as a bike lane so that it is a shared road with, as we do in other areas?
Exactly, I can take the icons on.
Yeah, painting the icons on the road and then adding them and then making it so that they can go back into the...
And yeah, just to add to that, I think that, I mean, this won't be addressed in a design, but it could be included in the concepts for the government road corridors that we need to consider. In addition, like in other communities, often they have signage, and I'm not, not saying this is a recommendation for this circumstance, but there are other creative ways to approach this that say, no vehicles on the deck or to be shared with a bicycle. If there's a bicycle there, they get priority. So it might be signage or painting, but there are kind of more creative means than, you know, ultimately widening the bridge deck or something, which is gonna be a project for downtown road.
Thank you.
In this project, is the crosswalk included for cyclists coming up Government Road that wanna turn left onto the bridge? When we did our ride about, we talked about playing the crosswalk on the other side of the intersection so that people could ride instead of having to navigate a left turn for traffic, people could longer decide. No, this isn't ringing bells?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, so we do have, we do have, we do have a crosswalk there. I, you know, I'm just trying to think right now where it's drawn, but we do have plans to put that, that crosswalk in as part of that sidewalk project and kind of connect the dots there. But we are utilizing the raised kind of pedestrian aisle and the pork chop that exists there as well, so, you know, we could follow up with what that might look like, but we have included that as far as trying to make sure that, that people aren't having to try to yield and find their way through that left turn condition.
Yeah, so there's a Sapers to School.
Absolutely.
The kids are having trouble. Mostly we're riding the sidewalk on the other side of the road, we get to the intersection and then hop three lines and then come off the road.
From, from the design, I don't have it right in my mind, but I do recall really focusing on that, on that connection, and I do recall seeing it, but I can't speak in detail.
As part of this whole...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, thanks. And I think I can understand not being able to do much of a bridge now, but I think in the future, if that does become a real pinch point, you know, it would be, I think, prudent to look at some of the alternatives. And I think when you talk about widening the bridge for motor vehicles, that's significant, but just putting that on sidewalks on the outside, like in the Landscape Bridge for example, might be something that's more realistic, at least on one side. And not this year, not this project, but if it does become a real problem in the future and is causing some difficulty, that might be an alternative we have to look at at some point.
Absolutely, it's definitely possible.
And there are a few kind of just high-level recommendations, such as that in the active transportation one, for when that does really become a pinch point. And I mean, we do notice the bridges typically are pinch points, the Highway 99 Bridge in addition to the Government Road Bridge, so it is something that staff can consider. Okay, any other questions on that project? The next is number 10, Industrial Way and Highway 99 Intersection Improvements. Previously, we have discussed these projects as projects that would be in the future. The reason that this one has been included in this year is because staff have put in a, sorry, grant request from FCM in order to work, begin working on the Discovery Trail, and without having some improvements done to those intersections, that Discovery Trail isn't necessarily a project that staff would recommend to move forward with because we know that safety improvements need to be considered for those particular intersections. I've done Industrial Way and Highway 99 rather than the Commercial Way, Highway 99 intersection because the portion of the trail that we've applied for funding for aligns with that intersection. The additional intersection we do have below the line, it could be a consideration for future years if we do have funding to continue work on Discovery Trail.
Can you give a little more detail about exactly what those $150,000...
Absolutely. So this is another project that there is a partnering opportunity with both MOTI and ICBC. Currently, the sidewalk doesn't go to the crosswalk of the highway, so if you can visualize being there right now, the sidewalk ends before the Discovery Trail, so you're, you're not really forcing people to use the crosswalk there, and so there's lots of just straight crossing across Industrial through the Discovery Trail, which is not the safest place for people to cross. The challenges of cost on that are just likely, they're largely driven by the, there's concrete box culverts, a lot of the kiosks for the electrical, for the traffic lights there. There's a lot of moving around in that area that's required in order to facilitate that. And so that one is commercial or no, is it?
This is industrial.
Okay, so you can kind of see that there's, where the, where the existing sidewalk ends, it's a few meters back to the west from the Discovery Trail, and so the project picks up that sidewalk, wraps it all the way around to the crosswalk there and interfaces that back to the Discovery Trail and does the same thing on the north. So it picks up that sidewalk there and wraps that all the way over to the crosswalk that leads you across the intersection on the highway.
Maybe Rob will remember this. I thought we outlined a lot of these things as deficiencies with the CAC, how we approved the project to begin with. Did we check off all the deficiencies on the CAC approved project? No? And, and another question maybe, I know that I think it was the development on the northwest corner had a $100,000 CAC contribution that was rezoned to put towards the Discovery Trail. I'm assuming those monies, we haven't spent them, so I'm assuming those monies are somewhere. So it could be that this is funded, not necessarily through the active transportation budget, but through the assumption of...
I think that Carrie may have some information around that as the planner that was on the project.
So the northwest corner was the recently approved car wash, and so that one, because there was no rezoning with that, there's no...
Previous one, that was previously rezoned, there was a CAC associated with it.
I believe the history of the site didn't have any, any other development on that site.
It was rezoned six years ago, five years, six years ago. It sat there empty, they just recently sold it and they did it for the car wash. It had a whole other project, completely different, associated with it and the CAC on it.
So we can certainly look into that.
This is another connection through the digital strategy as well that's important to our IT guys, so we would look to provide a crossing there for them and utilize the Discovery Trail.
Just on the deficiencies from the highway, or have we lost track of those?
Well, I just asked Rob if maybe we could look into this. Yeah, it's amazing that they, from my point of view, it's amazing when the Highway 500 project went through, they left those deficiencies like that. I mean, we've lived with them since 2008, 2009. I guess, I guess I'm voicing my frustration that we're paying for this, we're part of this, because really this is MOTI, Highway should have done this seven years ago, and they left us with substandard infrastructure.
So far. We can write letters in the presentation, I mean, not?
We can write letters, that's one thing we can do.
Well, I, I think just to counsel on that is what we're finding is very similar to our experience on the Cleveland 99 Traffic Operational Safety Review, is that when we reach out and champion these projects with partnerships, that we've got a lot better chance of moving them forward, but it's up to the direction of council on how we're gonna proceed on these projects. But this has been identified in a lot of different ways as a deficiency in the network and, and, you know, highway, road, trail, everything, and, you know, we think it's important to try to push forward. So and MOTI has identified that there may be some funding available, same with ICBC as well.
We appreciate there's good push forward. If we give a lot and start paying for stuff, the partnership will pay for it, they'll just keep taking it, they've been taking. So it's a political mind balance that we have to deal with.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and to that, I mean, I agree they should be done and we should do them, but if it's a deficiency that was left by them, we should show that to them and put it down as number one, number two, number three, and then we can start saying, look, you...
So staff's gonna go through the deficiencies to see if there's any that we're never...
So Chris brought to my attention, I missed number nine, so apologies for that. Number nine is the Malcolm Dyke Trail, northeast of the Malcolm Bridge, so it would ultimately be on the north side of the bridge, linking the sidewalk that runs from the bridge north to Shannon Estates, and the trail that would run to your right-hand side along the top of the dyke, link into what has been referred to as the Railwood Trail into Willow Park and into the schools. That route was identified as a short-term recommendation in the active transportation plan and is the recommended safer to school for Malcolm Elementary. So that, what we have included there is really just vegetation management and better surface treatment to improve accessibility. So then we did number 10, and we're gonna move on to number 11, which is a smaller ticket item, but it, this is accessibility improvements on Second Avenue immediately in front of Municipal Hall. When we repainted, we added the crosswalk and we hoped that we would have the accessibility curb cuts added. Last year, weather turned, that hasn't worked, and this year we need to do the work ASAP to ensure that that is accessible for all members of the community immediately in front of Municipal Hall. There have several recommendations have come from the library as well, so we'll kind of work with them and make sure that we are considering all of these, these issues here on Second.
Are there other, are there other curb letdowns that need to be done as well in the downtown or in economic areas, so not just the downtown, but could let downings that were not completed?
Many of our curb cuts are present but aren't necessarily with great alignment, so really we're focusing on those that are missing first and then maybe working to improve the accessibility of the existing. Number, or sorry, are there any other questions for number 11? Number 12, so these are pedestrian safety improvements... Um, number 12, so these are pedestrian safety improvements for the Adventure Center, um, sorry, between Adventure Center and Smokepluss, Smokepluss Park. Um, we have obviously completed quite a bit of work in that area recently from the Rose Park Trail Extension and the, um, Smokepluss Park Parking Lot configuration. Uh, we have again completed those projects except the crosswalks. So those have been included in those other project budgets. This improvement, um, line item is for Adventure Center into the parking lot, um, to really accommodate the increased pedestrian traffic that will occur there as part of both Rose Park improvements and other activities that are occurring in that parking lot area. So with this, we've requested $4,000 to help with the raised crosswalk and signage, um, warning of that crosswalk approach.
Just to be clear, is this the, um, crosswalk area that goes the corridor trail into the entrance to the Smokepluss main parking lot? The one that we showed us on the, on the ride around?
Uh, no, this is not. That one will be done, um, as part of our line painting. That will be in for council for the award of that and I think next week in the regular council meeting. This crosswalk is at the request of improving the existing crosswalk that exists between the Adventure Center and the parking lot. So there's an existing crosswalk that comes right out of the Adventure Center. So this is making improvements to that one. Those, those other projects are going to take care of that.
Just on that point, I mean, with the tenant going in there for the Rose course, was there some contribution coming from that? Is that the one that we were going to operate? I think it is the one we were going to operate as part of that.
So the, um, the budget ask that's in this is reflective of the district's requirements for that.
So the, the money is coming from?
This is our portion of that.
This is our portion of that and he, uh, the proponent put another form.
That's right.
Yeah, it was that.
Yeah, it's a share. And I think that Chris has something to add to my response there.
Yes, I just wanted to point that out for the, there's a share. Um, and also, uh, just Christine had asked to make sure we have a check in with you guys on the overall budgeting of the parking lot. Um, and there's different sections coming from different people and lots of, so, so just, I think, Carrie's the expert on this.
We're not going to talk about, we're going to keep, I don't want to get distracted by this. If we're going to talk about the parking lot, I'll put it on the agenda later on. Or again, down the rabbit hole.
I, I just, I just wanted to make sure that the breakdown, I, I just, I'll, I'll not talk a lot about the parking lot then. Just the breakdown is, is simply.
We could get distracted by 500 tangential conversations in this very big list of things. So I don't want to get too distracted. Go on.
Understood. So we have the crosswalks at Smokepluss and at Rose Park are already funded through the line painting. We have raising the parking lot, or sorry, raising the crosswalk that exists of the Adventure Center will be a 50-50 share. This is our $4,000. And then the, uh, $12,900 for the, um, parking lot reject is a separate line.
Goes up every time you hear, but it's not $12,900?
Uh, it may be $12,000. So that's, that's the three buckets in that area.
Yeah, but.
Split them all up.
Parking lot is not on this list.
Correct.
So just on the raised crosswalk, um, the, I, the funding's awesome. I'm just worried about the transportation crossing that. It's heavy traffic area, it's an industrial. Are we rerouting the industrial traffic or what is going on with? Because we can have these crosswalk and industrial traffic areas.
Maybe we'll go with Chris and then maybe we'll go with Laura, who's our truck expert, and have a response for you.
Um, so there, currently the truck route for, um, the coast aggregates and the heavy industrial closer to Brennan Park, um, running straight on the highway. There are a few areas, um, closer to Smokepluss area that are running through there. Uh, we haven't reached out to those, um, businesses yet on what we, we'll be asking them to turn right instead of left. Um, and we believe that the Finch, um, uh, intersection is sufficient to take their trucks. So it's part of the work we need to do. And then we can, we can, the tool that we have to require that is through the traffic by law where we can upgrade the truck routes to show the truck going that way.
So through the residential area instead of.
Down Finch.
Yeah, down Finch.
Right, past, past the R C.
And then, uh, obviously the large buses that come in out of the Adventure Center, we just need to design something they can.
Nope, they come into Adventure Center and won't.
Some of them, they come in, but they need to be able to. So just, we just have to do the line something.
Yeah, the perimeter buses and everything, all the other buses. See the Sky Connection, can we reach out to the public that are affected by that too, to make sure it's sort of listening?
Um, I don't know, Laura, you have anything you'd like to add to that response? Okay. Um, maybe move on to number 13? Okay, great. So, um, this is really just kind of a pot that we would like to use for additional school walkover recommendations that aren't necessarily infrastructure based. So signage, sometimes there's weight finding, um, in some culvert work. So really, there are small, kind of smaller items within those action plans that we would like to do and to be able to pull from a pot of money in order to do so. So we want to set that aside and ensure that we have the resources to make some of those smaller recommendations.
And you think this is enough to include the one school that hasn't done a lot with that?
Um, well, for, for this amount, it would probably be for the first three schools. We still have a few minor items that we'd like to work on with them. And then for the 20, for the current three schools, we would likely be taking a much stronger approach with them in the 2018 act of transportation projects. It may not be enough, but we're not quite sure.
I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure there's more in that this year. I'm expecting, well, it'll be the last one, but of course it's going to be coming in a month or two, so we'll have to.
Yeah, we could certainly find with them out. That's what council would like to do.
I'm wondering if, um, we do have that CAC for the Discovery Trail? We could.
Yeah.
Increase that.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I know we're not on 14 yet, but it's another little pot.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Um, so my, my big concern, and I spend a lot of time in that area, is around Brennan Park. And we have a playground zone that's 30 meters an hour that absolutely no one obeys, not, not transit, not that public vehicles, not parents rushing their kids to sports, like, no one. Um, and we don't have any signage that says what hours playground zones apply, but they're different than school zones. Um, and so, uh, it's amazing, people come up right behind you and honk if you're doing 30 at 5 o'clock. And the rules for playground zones are till one hour after sunset. So can we, and when you come out of Brennan Park, you don't know that you're in the middle of a playground zone. Uh, but we do have tournaments there, so we have people coming from out of town. And so as you turn in out of the parking lot, you know, that playground zone extends all the way down to the entrance to the second base of Ravenswood and all the way almost to the bridge, um, at the highway. It's really big, but we have no enforcement there. The kids at the school have put up some signs, but they got cloud over in the winter. So it's just a free for all. And if we, you know, we talked earlier about Brennan Park, kids should be able to get there safely from wherever. And, and that's one of the big concerns is that no one's watching them. I think that the, um, crossing that Polygon will put in from their development will help, um, but we really have, we have a skewed intersection and we have people doing 60 through there. So I don't know what the recommendation is, but.
Well, just a response to that, if that's okay? Yeah, we have a signage expert here with us who probably doesn't want to speak to that, but we can certainly send out and take a closer look at that. And I know, um, I have had conversations with RCMP about that area and they did request larger, more visible signage. Um, so it really might just be staff review it to go up and take some of this funding that we could have for signage and, and our painting if it's a treatment, um, and make some of those changes and that's all.
Can we communicate with transit and our own staff as well?
Yes.
To set a better example.
Certainly.
Thanks. And I actually think this is, it shouldn't just be playground zones. We need to start looking at wet roads or any slow roads. We have a highway. If people want to go fast, they can go on the highway. There's not like those options. We need to start setting lower speed limits in residential zones and in even on Government Road. So it's, so even if it's, if Government Road goes down, because those, those are, I think Government Roads are key.
So that's a great conversation. We can put it on.
Yeah, that needs to be on the agenda, but it, and not just around Brennan Park, but that if that whole area is going to be residential and pedestrianized, we need to slow down the whole area and not just around the one area.
I don't want to go down too big rabbit holes, but, because we can put this on a future agenda.
And I just wanted to highlight that the neighborhood bike boulevards that we're going to approach this year, um, does require lowering speeds and that might be a really great way to start the conversation with RCMP and kind of explore other areas that could have such a treatment.
And council's always wanted to, you know, do part of the project. So if there's any opportunities to sort of go out and test on that, we want to do that.
Great.
Yeah, and just to further to what Council Elliot said, um, because I also spent a little time around Brennan Park and there is a lot of traffic there and some of it's construction right now, but people just do go barreling through there. And so when we are kind of looking at that holistically with the kids and so forth that are around that area with the school, Brennan Park and, and now a residential development right across the street. And that's another place we could think about putting those flashing crosswalk signs and so forth. I know that's another budget item, but I'll just leave that for staff to think about and possibly the work plan for the next year or two.
Great. Thank you.
Do you need to draw a list of decisions?
What's that?
Do you need to draw a list?
No. Okay. So if that's okay, I will.
I think there's some things that are below the line.
Two, yeah. So I move on to the next line, which is again, the below the line items. Um, and I've added line 29 and 30, and then on your sheet you'll see 31. And I just kind of, kind of try to accommodate last minute, um, ideas, conversations today. So to start, I'll do the same thing line by line and we can have some discussion around each project. Um, number 20 is ultimately similar to the industrial way conversation we just had, um, except it's commercial way and it's below the line because like it was outlined, this is a portion of the trail that has had funding, um, an application for funding submitted. So we've ultimately placed it below the line rather than having both above. So, um, number 21 is a government road improvement. This would be from the north side of Malcolm Elementary School to the existing sidewalk that currently wraps Garibaldi Way. Um, and this is an item that would certainly, um, be of a benefit to the school community, but might, but requires kind of additional work with property owner and some acquisition in that area. So again, that's the reason it's below the line.
This is, it's a real important area. Anyone knows what we're talking about, you know, the director of motors and that? I, I'd like us to get to a point where we can actually, so to me, can actually get.
We have, staff have had, um, initial conversations with the property owner there. So that dialogue has started and it seems as though there is support for the project. So it's just really following through and carrying on to the finish.
Mr. Elliot, please. Is it possible to put that one on the design list so that it's not blocked and it's ready to go? I don't, I mean, because it sounds like it will take some negotiation and we had, just getting around some of the poles when we did this sidewalk corner there is a little bit tricky. So, um, is it, is it, is it traffic?
So I think that's one of the things that we heard when we did the kind of first phase of that project when we wrapped the sidewalk around when we were in council. And so we, actually Beth and I went and met with the property owner with those concepts and discussed with them, you know, would you entertain this? And looking what the impact is to some of those other businesses that have basically full frontage parking and to put in a sidewalk with letdown, what the impact is. And the response was actually really positive and there was good support. And I think this is another one that would, if we could get the design.
This is probably going dramatically if we could find a time, of course, it's supportive.
Possibly. I guess the thing is we're looking at impact and trying to make sure that we had the support there. And we also think this is a really good project for a grant because it checks so many different boxes. And, um, and ensuring that, that this sidewalk does interface to the overpass that, that comes through on the south side there and cutting back the hedge a bit and working with the school on how that interfaces to the parking lot. So we are working on that design and we also think that is a good project. And we've heard that from council for that direction. So it's just got a, it's just got some challenges that we're going to have to work through, but we have started those discussions for sure. And we're not seeing, uh, any game stoppers right now, but it's going to take some work for sure.
Yeah, we have, just said how it notes their potential of additional funding.
On the First Nations?
It says additional funding. I mean, with, so, I mean, we should hopefully get the additional funding before we do it.
Yeah, we used to have, yeah.
So the 20, we're talking about.
We're on the 21, but you talked about 20, yeah.
Oh, it says 2199.
We were on the.
We're on number 21.
Oh.
That's a good.
Okay, so if we go to 22, um, this is really, again, a Malcolm School safer to school improvement. And it is linking the trail that currently runs in front of Viking Ridge, um, development into the schoolyard. Right now, there's a curved gutter that kind of blocks them and kids really get directed out into traffic before they can be safely directed into the back of the schoolyard there. We have had initial conversations again with the school district to see if we can make that improvement happen. And we have, um, some drainage issues and other issues in the area. So we need to kind of come up with the best approach, working with school district for that. It, it's a relatively, it seems as though it's a relatively minor project, but when you take a closer look at it, there are some other complications in order to kind of accommodate the school buses as they come in and just the general school drop off traffic. Anything you'd like to add to that?
I think it's the number one priority from the operations staff at Malcolm School that we met with, that they want, they want to see some improvements there. And they've identified that one as their biggest priority to us. And, um, you know, they've got some challenging budget constraints of their own, but they have indicated that they want to be partners and work together on that one. So we're going to continue to chew away. And there's a, really, there's a bus shelter that's identified and the advertising bus shelters, it's going to be done on the frontages of the school this year. So just to try to tie all that stuff together.
Okay. Are there any other questions for number 22? Okay, great. Um, number 23 and number 24 both relate to Westway sidewalk improvements. Again, these are improvements that are identified in the act of transportation plan, but have been kind of more specifically tailored as a result of just doing the walkover with Valley Cliff Elementary. Um, we have recommended a small portion of sidewalk just north of the school. Um, it's 50 meters that would really just allow students' entrance to the trail that they're currently using to access the school field. There is no sidewalk there, um, and it often gets filled up. It's also where the school bus drops the students. So it would be really a safety improvement for them. Number 24 is extending the sidewalk that runs basically north of what is kind of a general store, um, to Juniper Place? Yeah, Juniper Crescent, and then providing a crosswalk across Westway there. Any questions for us? Okay, great, thank you. Um, 25 is really, um, a combination of things. This is an area that has poorly located hydro poles that are difficult for buses to access the stop and have adequate pullout. Um, it's quite uneven. It links the trail that comes from Willow Park to the trail that fronts Viking Ridge. And overall, the area could just benefit from some tidying, for lack of better terms, potentially, um, a bench for those that wait at the bus shelter, or sorry, the bus stop that's there. that's there. And it really is just overall improvements. It would be a design that would need to be complete, but it's not very accessible and it's an eyesore. The number 26 is an improvement for Brackendale. This is government at Eagle Run. Currently, two corners are wrapped with sidewalk. It's a really busy area for pedestrians with the businesses that are on the southeast corner. And also, this section of the road is a really critical link to the overpass, the Kingswood Overpass. And you notice very, very heavy pedestrian traffic in the area. Only two corners are wrapped with sidewalk, so we would propose the northwest corner have the same treatment, which ultimately fronts the Petro Penn. And at this point, kind of leaving out the southwest corner as that area could be improved with future redevelopment. Sorry, southeast corner. Okay. Same type of thing for Judd Government. Vehicles take quite a fast left-hand turn off government to go down Judd. Judd is going to have increased traffic and this area really, again, has pretty high volumes of pedestrians. We have currently three corners of that intersection wrapped with sidewalk, and we would request that the fourth gets the same treatment. And it could be a bit of a reconfiguration for the turning radius at the Judd corner as well. We have a bus stop just south of there, so not to say it could link the whole way, but it would be nice if we could incorporate a transit improvement in that space as well. And then 28 is kind of another bigger ticket item that may require some time from staff for property purposes. It currently, the sidewalk is inconsistent, the length of Malcolm, and it's a really busy section of road off Highway 99 linking government. It's a critical east-west connector for both bicycle traffic and pedestrian traffic. So what we would like to see is consistent treatment along both the north and south side of Malcolm. So on this slide, I have the two additional items that have been added since the report went to council. And then on your sheet you'll see three, because I was able to update that just before we came in. The Tantalus and Garibaldi Way northeast corner, that tent, the area of Tantalus has also experienced an increased traffic. It's a really busy intersection in general, both pedestrians, traffic and cyclists. In addition, on the north side, there is a bus stop that will be receiving a bus shelter as per the advertising bus shelters. It is an area that really could require safety improvements, and the fact that we could link it with that program would be really beneficial. So it ultimately is a sidewalk wrapping the northeast corner and linking into the bus shelter, and it really would ensure accessibility for that. Number 30 is the, oh yes, so this is also a project that we, the district would be required around the school district on, and this is providing a safe link on school district property from House South Secondary to Slomish Elementary. It is a project that we identified on our ride last year with council, and it really would just be a pedestrian improvement and in a very high traffic area. This could also be something that's considered in that design concepts for Buckley, but could be considered as a separate project as well. And the budget that I provided there is really just for that gravel treatment, but depending on what, what we were seeking, it could be substantially higher than that if we were looking for pavement, lighting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So again, just one that requires additional work with the school district, but is worth considering.
Thank you. Was that the one that we also thought might be suitable location for a bus pullout, serve the two schools? So it's kind of that grassy area next to the playing field?
Yeah, so the alignment, and this is just in kind of staff's head at the moment, but the alignment that I envisioned would ultimately fall where the track used to be. So it's a flat surface that really runs parallel to Buckley and that just links the schools there.
Yeah. Because that, that would be a bigger job, and I think we're looking, I think that school or land would be called a conversation, so.
Yeah, it would, and, and it gets another project that requires additional work with property.
But in the meantime, we could, could just gravel trail down.
Do you want to just wind that up on that APS?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll just maybe put one in there, if that's okay, just the existing C7 Buckley sanitary lift station that's halfway into the bike lane. We've done a fair bit of work on the sanitary master plan with the modeling of that with increased density of dent bill in that area, and as well with the condition of that lift station. And that one's definitely at the end of its life and when we're going to be pushing forward a design to replace that, and that would likely require it to be out of the existing roadway and may have some impacts on school land as well. So we may have to have that conversation with the school at the same time.
So here we, here we have an image, if anyone's confused, so.
Can we zoom in one more spot?
Yeah, look at that. So you can see that where the track used to be, it's level, but the path could, if we decide to move forward with this, come along here, because the students currently, there is, there is a sidewalk, but no one's crossing the street, so they walk along the shoulder and it's, it's really busy. In addition, it's a bike lane and there are all other obstructions. So the path could come from here, which is the corner of the House Sound parking lot and links to the crop sidewalk that is in front of the school, along the field and then out at the Third Avenue connector here, the Bailey connector.
Can we not just take those bollards and put them along the road there? And then that, it's, it's amazing how many people use that sidewalk, including buggies and school kids, because we have the shelter, the bus shelter along there. Not, it isn't shelter yet, it's a stickin' road, but eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to get bus shelters, but people walk in between two schools all the time, as you say. They don't use a sidewalk, they actually go on the road. Would it be possible to just put the bollards? Because we don't have any property issues, it would just make it easy, convenient, less property, I can't remember, mandrum.
So I guess one of the pros and cons of getting rid of the shoulder, putting the bollards on the side of the shoulder versus, or putting both there versus doing that trail off from.
It still is a football field.
Yeah. Maybe if it's okay, can direct Laura discuss this recently and Carrie, so I don't know if you are willing to respond to that.
I think the, the bollards are a great idea for a short-term opportunity. If we want to look at long terms, which is part of the 2017 plan for a Buckley Avenue design, we'll have to look at the long term to how to accommodate pedestrians and cyclists on that road right away and where we run into the ditch as well. So the other, one of those options is, I believe in this design plan, is to consider either the trail as a multi-use trail opportunity to pull cyclists and pedestrians off of Buckley, or, or use it as a way to have separated for cyclists and pedestrian access for, between the two schools that way.
So just following up with that, why would cyclists go off the road into the House Sound parking lot? It, it doesn't, you know, when you're commuting between, I, I think about commuting between the economic areas, and I realize that there's a long-term design plan for having a separate bike lane, hopefully, one day, along Buckley. But in the meantime, kids and parents ride their bikes along the road there. Having it separated with the bollards is, is a great short-term, I agree with you, it's short-term until the road is open, but they can also be removed quite easily if the road ever gets redesigned and it does allow for cyclists and pedestrians to be removed from traffic without going off into a parking lot, which makes, I'm not sure, it maybe gets students to House Sound, but it doesn't address the rest of the population that's using the road.
I think through you, Mary, I think that's the challenge that we face right now, and so that's why the, the point for Buckley Avenue is here to address some of those challenges and to find a design that's actually key for all of those modes of transportation.
I think the, the big challenge for me on that one with the council prior is, is obviously when you're going to school and when you're leaving school, there's high volume. There are kids all over the road walking south down, a lot of them on that side of the road. Northbound kids going north. The elementary school kids, they're, they're a little more better trained, they, their parents force them to cross the street, walk up the sidewalk on the other side. But it's a mess, and then you've got cyclists in the bike lanes, they should be going up the road that way. So I'm not sure pulling the bollard out and making kids walk on the shoulder between the ditch and the bollard is necessarily the best option. $16,000 to put a gravel path on there, I think is pretty good money spent for the amount of kids we're going to take off the road. We're still going to have the cyclists going northbound in the northbound lane, and that's great, that's what it should be. But it's that stretch from House Sound to the, to the elementary school that it's a mess when the kids are in the school, it's a mess. Really dangerous. And I think that's, and then you throw the vent in there and everybody parks there and then there's nowhere for them to go. So I, I, I hear you in terms of, we don't want to do something that's going to minimize some design in the future, but I think you could keep the trail, you know, close to the trees, make sure you're not impacting the usefulness of the, of the field, and create that connection between the two schools will do a lot to just relieve a lot of pressure. Ted?
Well, I agree with that. I mean, I think that, you know, kids migrate out to where the cars come there and then they just stick to that same side. I think putting the gravel pathways is a great idea, but put it on the school board probably. And then it keeps it open for Buckley, for all the design we're going to have to do.
I think just a quick one on that is when you consider that you've got about a meter and a half on the fog line to the edge of the bank there for the ditch. And if you were to put those temporary bollards, really if you even put them right on the fog line, you've got a sanitary lift station that takes up a portion of that on the north end of that. And if you were to just try to use the, the chariot kind of bike towing scenario is that that takes up a meter, and you've got a half a meter for people that are going to be traveling in opposite direction, and there's a fall hazard into the ditch. Like it's a really steep ditch there as well, and so I think we'd have to be a little bit careful on, on trying to entertain both of that traffic and a temporary delineation right on the fog line, because a meter and a half's not enough room, I don't think, especially with a sanitary lift station.
The ditch, ours or school's here?
I believe it's ours.
Nice to meet you, Colbert, back in Phillip.
Well, and that's an interesting component, and that's just a quick one. Yeah, but I think that's one of those discussions, like when we're riding around, is we can talk about curb gutter sidewalk and the costs are per meter, but taking something like that, that's low-lying, flat area and putting all that into a pipe and trying to get it flow, to flow somewhere in a flat grade through a rail crossing is going to be extremely expensive and its performance is not going to be great. And so again, I think it's just, you know, we just have to be a bit careful on what we, what we think is the low-hanging fruit and what's going to take a lot more effort.
Thanks. For me, the issue is that people are going to travel that way anyways. You can build as many gravel paths as you want, but kids go on the road and there's a fall hazard, but there's a worse hazard of them being pushed into traffic. I don't mind falling in the ditch, I do mind kids getting hit by a car, so putting them into.
I might go, actually.
Yeah, and I, they'll fall in the ditch, I'm sure that'll happen. But you know, you, it's kids and chariots and roads, they're already, that's already happening, the pedestrian access along there. And because you put in a gravel path, it's, it's standard issue that you can put in paths, but kids will go onto the road regardless, and my concern is that it's high traffic. So putting in a few bollards means that traffic, they're protected from traffic, which is my concern, ditches, and falling in ditches is may not, but it's, you know, yes, it's a restricted road, and yes, there's engineering challenges, but the challenges of having kids that are going to take that pathway anyways, and it's not just the kids, it's the public that are pushing chariots and putting, and pushing strollers and using that path. I'm there every morning because my kid goes to school, my kid picks up the bus there and she rides her bike along there. And it's like kids, everybody's using that little right of way. So even if you make the load a little bit less and put the bollards in so that, I think people are pretty, can be pretty respectful of each other, and maybe we have both, you know, it's not an and/or, we put in the gravel paths, so hopefully move the pedestrians, but then also the kids that are riding their bikes aren't going to be on the gravel paths, so maybe it's both.
Are we in the comments space? Well, we're, we're still sort of discussing the last two items that were proposed, and then we're going to talk about all of them. I think we're just asking some questions about this one right now.
Okay. I, I just have general comments about the bollards.
Okay. All right, let's do the last.
On to the last, so, and I, I think that this last item is, is quite a large one, so, and really, I think that it's identified in the actual transportation plan as a future connection, and the reason that it is identified that way is that it's something that should be considered with future development in that particular area. We have heard from residents of the area that that is a really critical connection, and I think that kind of staff have, have started that conversation without knowing exactly what the residents would like to see there and better understanding that connectivity issue. I mean, conceptually, I understand what the problem is, but it would be really nice to have kind of a workshop likely with some of those residents and really understand what their concerns are and how we can better accommodate them would be really important. So I, I've left that as a, to be determined, because I really can't put a budget item on that without understanding what that project could look like.
Wouldn't that Kingswood Development look after this?
Absolutely. The alignment of the Toboggan Trail that goes north-south on the Hunterlands, it's perfectly with the, with the overpass.
And DCCs, and I understand there might be some changes coming there.
And even in the interim, we did approach the landowner there to request a temporary right-of-way that could utilize that with the access that goes to the residents on the north side of that site. We haven't been successful with that request as of now, but I'm not sure what you could do besides trying to get temporary access through private property to eliminate the concern of reasonable grade to connect people from that, that part in Valley Cliff and Hospital Hill back down into Scott Crescent.
Well, I mean, it has to go over that private property, and when that development comes forward, it will, right?
Yes, sir.
So when we did the right of, the residents had waited for us and they left, and there was still a couple left, and they had a number of suggestions on how to fix it while we wait. The development's not going to build that for years. This has literally been in front of council for 11 years. They've done workshops with the residents in the past, they've talked with residents, been on priority of the spread. We, we have fired the Hunter Park so we can scout to find alternatives that didn't rely on too much private property to go through. So, you know, I look at this list, and we'll, we'll get into the whole list now, I guess, and Valley Cliff, once again, is underserved through this project. So just look at all that. Any more questions on this, and then we'll get into the whole list. Okay. I have Counselor Spill and Counselor Blackmore.
Are we on?
We're on evaluating everything and making progress.
I actually really appreciate staff's list. It's, I think it's well-thought-out, understanding how we work with capital projects, I really appreciate it as well, and the challenges are really interesting. I think we have a pretty challenging, you know, community against community, all the little connections that need to happen. I still am, when, you know, it's hard to look at the little projects that are extensions off of things and find value in them. When we, I wonder how we save money for the bigger deal. You know, when I look at connecting trails, I still think they need lighting, and they're not going to be useful unless they have lighting, because we have some pretty dark times of the year where people are still using their bikes and, as far as how are, how is that design work for government road? And because our economy, now we're really talking about densifying the business park and having more of an, how do we get people to the economy? And get people riding their bikes so that we can alleviate the parking issue. And unless it's convenient and well-lit and flat, people are not going to use their bikes. So to me, government road is still the biggest deal, and I really appreciate the work that staff has done. I think it's pretty thoughtful. With that in mind, is trying to get the government road design work done at the same time as, as addressing the smaller issues with the smaller budget items with paint and everything else. So I, I, I still wonder with the amount of budget, whether it's grant, or, you know, if that's something that we can look for a better grant for, but having comprehensive planning across, across government road, which is still already lit, flat, and in some areas it's huge, in some areas it's really, really, really challenging, especially with the engineering issues that are on that road. So I just wonder if staff has thought about, the more comprehensive, or what your thoughts are on the comprehensive inclusion of government road and economy? Because I don't see a lot of downtown, except for like the Second Avenue cur, I don't see sidewalks in downtown, I don't see how people walk around the economy and, and get to those areas with really, without really challenging.
Well, Mary, I'll start with the idea of government. It's a, a big creature, and it is something that staff discuss, but with those concepts, it will really help guide us so we know what treatments are required in each area. And it really is a unique corridor, and that really by block by block, it, it has its own unique qualities and challenges. So that concept will really help us, and once we have an idea of what that is, we can plan better for those larger projects. You know, I saw Carrie had her hand up too, so she might have something to add to that, but that's kind of my initial response to that.
Thank you.
No, and I just add to second about the downtown comment, is that we are seeing a lot of development right now in the downtown area, and what we really need right now is plans to actually see what those streetscapes are. So this is to having, so that we can actually have developers rebuild those streetscapes, and then when, when we have missing pieces, then we can identify them in future budget years.
Can you hurry up a little?
Yeah, hurry up some.
Yep, I will hurry up. But that's the downtown neighborhood plan as well. We, if we have things that can be addressed with development, that's great, but we can't wait for development to make it pedestrian-friendly. It's, if, if there's design standards we have, we need to plan for setbacks and start working on active transportation before those developers, because it could be, it could be 50 years before we get along with the projects going. Jason, please.
Yeah, I really, I'm impressed with this, this list. We've come a long way, I think, in the past two years in terms of really looking at this in a methodical way. So I think we're, we're ahead of most jurisdictions our size and forward-thinking on this, and that's really great. And I like the mix, especially in the above the line, of, you know, projects that come up as a re- projects that come up as a result of infrastructure opportunities, you know, doing other activities, but also balanced with some just targeted projects that we just want to do. So I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't, I think, you know, it's very logical. And I'm also very excited about this idea of bike boulevards and I think that's something that would be very successful in our community. So happy to see that. One question I had is, I want to know, what do we need to do to be in a position to have a sidewalk built between Judd Road and Depot Road along Government? What do we need to do to have it so that we could build it in 2018?
Okay. I'm going to leave my very high level and then I'll be right to Matt if that's okay. First of all, it certainly will be something that comes as a recommendation of the Bracknell Walkabout. And so, yeah, again, just waiting to see what the neighborhood really expects there and better understanding them before we move into that. So that would be something that, you know, we would be considering for 2018, not 2017. Having said that, I'm absolutely positive there are a lot of challenges in that area. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Simmons who likely has a response there.
I think one of the major things is that this did come up in the multimodal transportation plan as one of the recommendations and it was very undervalued as far as the constraints and the challenges there and it was in the magnitude of a few million dollars. So what it would take in order to do that would be really take some, go get some concepts, do a bunch of survey, do concepts and then push forward through detailed design. I can tell you, having worked on the intersection of Depot and Government, the way that Government Road sits in the road right of way isn't always proper. So it may require property acquisition. There's a few creek crossings in there that are challenging power poles. You know, there may be opportunities with future infrastructure. There's a few projects in, say, the next five years of capital related to water and sewer. That could be opportunities, but it's not going to be cheap and it's not going to be easy. So what it would take would be some budget to do design work and to look at really what that overall feasibility looks like and start throwing some costs at it, because I think it'll even likely surprise me, having looked at how challenging that is. I, just to be really honest with that.
Which is in the Government record.
Yeah. And I definitely, I guess my feedback would be that I just want to make sure that in that particular, I'm probably very specifically just the sidewalk between Judd Road and Depot Road and don't want it to get lost up in the whole bigger picture thing because I agree, like the whole corridor is very, very long term stuff. And I understand that we would need to do surveying to see where we are to be. I'm wondering if we, will that be done under the design work that you're proposing for this year's budget? To look at that, just to say like, oh, well, right of ways, you know, just basically surveying that out and seeing what opportunities there might be. And maybe, you know, maybe it's the case that we could, you know, make a lot of progress and maybe there's a couple gaps that just, you know, for whatever reason, they're very insurmountable for the time being. But, I mean, I just, it's my observation that, you know, it's my neighborhood, so I'm going through it every day, but there is a lot of usage on that and kids walking on the shoulder all the time. And so if there's anything that we can do to actually, you know, and then also like have a plan, right? And then also make sure that the property owners can understand, like they need to be, you know, contributing where they can in a reasonable way to get this done, because I'm sure a lot of them would support that. Not everybody, but just kind of getting us into that point where we can just do it and, you know, and whatever that looks like, right? And maybe it's not curb and gutter, maybe it's not, you know, all those kinds of things. So I guess that's the only thing that I felt was missing from the list and I just hope that it doesn't get lost in a frame that we can have a more robust discussion once the, once this thing is done next year.
So maybe just keep that in mind is that next year's budget, we might want to be concluding something on that section.
Just one quick one. In the discussions that we had with ICBC, they're more than willing to try to fund similar type projects like Cleveland 99 with traffic operational safety reviews. And maybe that's just the takeaway for Staff is to leverage our budget contribution for getting as much as we can out of that. But they've indicated that they would, they would be interested in looking at that for us. We could leverage that.
Thanks.
Thanks everybody for a great piece of work. I like the characterization of the above the line stuff. I do agree with that. I think the Valley Cliff is a little bit underserved here, but on the whole, it's a great piece of work. You sort of let the cat out of the bag, I think, a bit before Conrad has spoken about the dark fiber. Because I haven't had a chance to talk to him about that respect to the digital strategy, but I think it's a great idea to be evolved and working with a synergy with IT to get that stuff in the ground. Ostensibly, like you said, going down the corridor trail with dark fiber, the underpass. Would it be then the object to get to the Mudi and tie all that together via dark fibers?
Yeah, I don't want to let it out of the bag either. I mean, I think we're kind of...
It's no secret that that's the goal.
Yeah, so I just, you know, to be respectful of that is that we are looking for those types of opportunities and, you know, we've met today to kind of plan out, what have we got for, you know, 2017? What are the projects that they want to come along with us on? Even the work that we're doing on Centennial right now for the streetlights, we're putting in an extra conduit for them. So we're not always able to complete all of these sections, but there's really good value for us to add these in where we can.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate and applaud that forward thinking of combining all those kinds of things.
Doug, with Karen.
Yeah, thanks for the work and this was helpful for me. I will say, I mean, the comment about, you know, not much in Valley Cliff and so forth. I can understand Government Road attracting a lot of attention because there are five schools on Government Road. And for me, the number one priority is safe routes to school and follow closely about commuter traffic. But safe routes to school is definitely atop and there's five schools on Government Road, so I can understand that meaning. Talking about the budget, I mean, I'm happy with everything above that green line, the 700,000, which I think is a number that's in our 10th budget at the moment. Below that, while they're worthwhile projects, it would be a real discussion for me to get any of them into the 2017 budget, unless there are other sources of funding or unless we find something else that we can cut in. I'm not sure if that's there. Understand that those are definitely future projects, certainly. I guess the question is whether or not any of them are going to be included in this year's budget.
Yeah. I think that's a good question. I mean, we have, the numbers that we provided are estimates based on similar projects we've done in recent years and Matt's expertise and budgets in general with Capital Works. So, I mean, as it is now, we believe that these are solid estimates and it does set the budget for the 70,000 that we met that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Likewise, I think it's a great way of reading these things. So I like the format. It's really clear and I'm happy with everything on the list. But below the line, I was wondering if the list is what you prefer. If we had money, would you do number 20 or you do number 28? Is there any order there? Are they all ideas that you thought would be good and you just didn't buy them?
Just want to ask that the...
Are they listed in priority sequence?
Loosely, yes.
That's what I said.
Loosely, yes. No, I...
Yes, I would say they're listed in priority sequence.
Yeah, because there's a couple there that are not that expensive. And you talked about one, I think it was number 25 or 26, where the kids are standing in puddles waiting for the bus. And I thought, well, if we're going to do any, that people might want to do.
I think one thing is that the attention today was to check in, to review kind of the planned work that we have for the year. If we continue to be successful with ICBC and we get more funding and we can leverage that, we'll just continue to do more work.
Please start.
Well, I think, you know, if we can go out and hustle and get grant opportunities and further reduce the capital cost that's outlined in the 2017 budget, absolutely. We'll just keep going. I mean, the list is, you know, in the active transportation plan is in the magnitude of 30 somewhat million dollars. So I think part of it is this check in to make sure that we're on, we're meeting the expectations in the direction of council. And the other one is to go away and to try to hustle as best we can and to take the seed money that we look at as 700,000 and look for these grant opportunities, because most of them aren't 100% grant funded. But in order to get these grants, you really got to demonstrate that the design's done, that you don't have real estate issues. So we're kind of constantly trying to kind of keep up with that. And I would, I would say that over the year, the most opportunities that we're seeing in grants is in things like active transportation and healthier communities. And so we're very much trying to be ready for that and to take advantage of those opportunities, so.
So finally, the Scott Road connector to Valley Cliff. It's Marn Segal and his family that own that Scott Crescent project. And Marn Segal does the, what's that thing he does every year? It's called the Wee. And he brings in thousands of kids from all over the province and pays them all to come into a big concert because he's so interested in safety for kids. He owns that property, the Wee after Ross there, and he's got a development coming on that property there. And if we can't get adesment to get that trail through there, there's something wrong. So I think you should phone Scott.
I'm not, but yes, I'm sorry.
Matt doesn't.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And so, you know, potentially we're, you know, we're talking to the design team and maybe we shouldn't be talking to them. Maybe we shouldn't be talking to them directly. And, you know, we'll continue to push. Ultimately, we knew that, you know, I guess three years ago now, I was doing the water main through that community right when that project was in its rezoning. And so I felt the brunt of how the neighborhood felt about not only that project, but the water main that we're working on. So, you know, we'll continue to question, we'll continue to ask.
I mean, I'd be happy if you'd call them. I know it's not my call to say that, but I've certainly bugged them a few times over the last few years about the bridge that's not built yet. Just last week, I bugged them again about that, you know? So, but I do think that...
An update on that is they were finally successful in purchasing the old site and so they're coming for a rezoning.
That's what I'm saying. So there's going to be more action there. So I would phone them and say, hey, we're going to get this trail through. Somebody hurt themselves more.
Karen? I'm happy to support this list. I think it's really well balanced and just a little bit, and then for everyone, I think it's easy to try and get ahead of ourselves because we have done the Walkabouts except for one. And we can see all those projects that we've done, but I think you've done a great job balancing this. The only thing, as we talked about earlier, would be to see if we can get the CAC money for that Discovery Way Trail and put some more in just a general offer. And I also wondered just as a suggestion, whether we need a separate category than just above the line and below the line? Because in this conversation, I hear you say, well, we're already in talks with or we already have. So I wonder if it's sort of like, before something below the line, there's a category that it says, you know, in the funnel or conversation's underway, or something that shows the community that we haven't forgotten, especially around that school because it's a high density neighborhood and so many kids can walk in that neighborhood. We haven't forgotten about that. It's just it's going to take some time and we're in progress. And obviously, the same with the Scott Crescent, conversations have happened and they're not there yet, but it's not that we're just neglecting it. So I think there's, we could be a little bit more subtle in communication with the community that, you know, if things move up, right, going from conversation to design to product.
Yeah, thank you for that because as this is the first time we've done this, it is really valuable that we have feedback like that. So we can also provide a better update to council to say, these are the things that we have been working on and they are sometimes quite slow, but we haven't forgotten about them. So certainly for next year or next time we do an exercise similar to this one, we can include kind of a in-progress category and introduce those and then maybe move on to the potential this year, next year projects.
So thank you for the list. I think it is well thought out. It's really good to see all engineering, tech, IT, planning, transportation, all knitting all these projects together that did not happen in the past very well. Also, that's great to see. My recollection on that one part was it was a 200,000 over CAC. Originally it was proposed to have the new bridges going over the big culvert to allow the Discovery Trail to more intuitively go to the sidewalks, the crosswalks over to the middle island. And so that money is sitting somewhere. And I thought it was 100,000 for each of these two funny bridges they wanted to put in. That may not be the best solution in it, but it still is at the discretion of the district to figure out how it was for active transportation, Discovery Trail in that zone. So if we can find those funds and allocate them to that project there, I guess I want to, my question is, I guess, is there a threshold? I mean, can we, a lot of these are small. We might be able to assimilate them into the actual capacity of doing these projects. So if we found 150,000 dollars funding for that one in CAC file somewhere, can we get some of these other things? But I really think putting an off sheet gravel trail between the two schools real good bang for a buck in that section. It might, it might be moving boulevards to that, making part of the whole thing. We can do that analysis, but putting that trail and get at least a good chunk of people off the road. There was a letter from the Valley Cliff residents and Mr. Anderson and a bunch of others talking about some improvements to that connection. I think we have to remember that is a, we didn't do the high school as a separate HBC, sacred school, but that is a, we have a lot of high school students that walk from Hospital Hill, Valley Cliff to school down that way. It's a real critical path and it's been, I know that the developer will eventually deliver something that connects that neighborhood, but there was a lot of smaller improvements that could be done in the meantime. I want to be, date those out because maybe we've addressed some of them, but I thought we got a letter from Mr. Anderson just a few months ago on this.
Maybe I could shed some light on that. We have looked into one of the kind of bigger items. I've met with Mr. Anderson to discuss this kind of connectivity issue and it's more of an in-camera conversation at this point, but we do have a solution that could be coming down the pike for one of his recommendations. And I don't see efforts on that front slowing down at all. I think Staff are very much aware that this is a major gap in our network and we would like to address it. It's just, I think it's going to be a slow process.
It's been slow as we've been going on.
Well, I'm not, not that I know of because I haven't been here. I foresee it being slow in the future as well, sorry to say. We could certainly like raise it on our priorities though.
And the only other thought I thought, and I just want to make sure that items like 13 and 14, that they're enough to sort of do the signage and the painting and all the little things? Is that enough? Like it should be allocating a little bit more or is that, are we good with that enough?
I think it's, to answer that, it's something. It allows us to do some of the low hanging fruit with a little bit of the budget that we have left. Is it enough? No, it's never enough. I mean, when you're staring down a $35 million plan.
It's getting on the charcoal.
However, that being said, you know, it's important that we achieve not only, you know, the long term, the medium term and the short term. And so, you know, I think that the understanding of kind of the line items for us in there is that we, you know, we just pigeon these holes for just those types of things. It's signage, it's paint. Our operational budget sometimes can take some of those on, but largely they can't. So, I mean, the idea is that these are able to, you know, quickly get these things done when they're warranted and some of these things we're aware of right now, some of them we're not. And so it's a bit of a placeholder, I guess.
So what I'm hearing is general approval of your above the line list. If we can figure a way to find the 150 on item 10 through CACs, they're sitting on the bank somewhere. I certainly think the off-street connection between the schools, so number 30 would be a banker, but just the gravel part at this point. What's that? Oh, yeah, it's the school district. I think, anyway. And then I think there's a couple in the below the line list. So I guess what I'm looking for Staff is if we find funding for 150 elsewhere and we can do some of these other things, would you then further evaluate some of them and then, and then potentially act them? Or are we hitting our threshold?
No, I think, well, I mean, the quickest thing is that if you can fund industrial, why not do commercial? I mean, it's kind of, you know, that's one opportunity there. And to leverage that through the discussions with Ministry of Transportation and ICBC, you know, that's probably the cleanest wash. If it's a function of, hey, we'd prefer to get more short-term type projects done, then I guess that's the direction that we're kind of looking for today. We're not quite there yet, but, you know, it's a good discussion to have as far as what would be the next steps below the line.
But I think that we could identify some other projects that if, in the event that we did get funding and we had some extra, not to say that's a guarantee, that we would know what kind of council's priorities are based off this list.
Yeah, it, to me, it's a little bit speculative that we'll find this 150,000 dollars and I hope we do, but I would... I would perhaps suggest that we go to staff and say, go away and think about, what if you had another $150,000? What would you recommend?
That would recommend, he's already told us what he'd-
Well, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is.
That's me. It's good opinion, but it's not me.
But I think that's a starting point, yes. You know, because some of these are, it's about three or four small ones you can knock off, or there's one big one you can knock off. There's, so, I, I mean, we could go around in circles all day and say, you know, we haven't met-
That's exactly what I want them to be able to reflect on that. I'll just tell you my priorities. Might not be that exact, it might be depending on who comes to the table, but my priorities are safe routes to school and areas that aren't fine, aren't like, I think Valley Cliff is under served, so I'd like to see more projects in Valley Cliff. There it is.
Valley Cliff is under served, but that's all.
And it's a little unfortunate, the walkabout in Bracken Dell could not be for this meeting, because I think it may come up a couple bunch of real quick wins, and we don't have them in here yet. So, I want to leave that door open for that, the ability to act on some of those things.
Thanks. And to that point, I think downtown's really under service. Safe routes, no, it's because I see kids walking, yeah, I get to see, say, you know, truck routes, and kids trying to get to school. So, for safe routes to school, even if we just focused on safe routes to school, because we're-
That was the point I was trying to, the safe routes to school has been a priority of council. So, if you looked at all this under the line, safe routes to school.
Sorry, just to have some clarification. In the event that we do come across some funding opportunities, council would be happy and satisfied if staff then reconsidered our options considering the safe routes to school recommendations above others. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, thank you.
This is a really complicated option, but yes. Okay, so, we have the pavement budget. I'm not sure if we can do this in ten minutes. Do you think you can do this in ten minutes?
Absolutely.
Please, sorry, just before- Oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to make a general comment, because in previous years, we first was studying, pavement study in 2010, and so, I've been really happy with the way it's gone the last few years, frankly, which is based on the science coming out of that study, as opposed to us trying to make guesses about our preferences. And so, I'm wondering if you even want to go there. Personally, I would be quite happy to go back to the study, which identified priorities, identified efficient ways to deal with these things, and that's the way it's been happening, and not get very subjective about it. So, I like the objectivity of that study, so, obviously that-
Now, we're going to redo it, because it is seven years old, that study.
Yeah, we definitely need, we definitely need an update to that. I think, just to speak to your comments, Council Race, is that it hasn't felt, sitting in this chair, that it's been an easy process to come in and talk paving every year. Two years ago, we awarded it for Claude Backroads. The intent is to really just have the discussion, so we're very much still using the pavement management plan to identify. That was the first effort for the district ever in 2010 to even get this, get that inventory straightened away. What we're doing now is we're wrapping these things into conjunction with, you know, work that we have with CN. We've CCTV'd our sanitary system, so we know what repairs and deficiencies we have. We've got a sanitary master plan that also identifies those projects. You overlay the water capital plan, active transportation, and balancing one of the wildest times in the community's history, and I think that's what's come up with this list here. And so, from our perspective, the pavement management plan is a function of another checkbox that we're using as far as these roads are concerned. And I'm happy to just quickly run through these, just to ensure that I can get the kind of point across as far as where our head's at. Okay, number one, Kentire from the Boulevard to Bill's Place. Water main that we did, we worked into the fall. Instead of just doing the patching that was in the project, we've got to redo that road. We didn't know that until we started digging it up, but we've got to redo that whole road from the Boulevard all the way down to Bill's Place. That's why it's number one. $75,000 out of the roads budget, $50,000 out of the water main budget. Get that one done as soon as we can, because we've left it in bad shape, and we've just been doing temporary kind of repairs for that, just to kind of buy the time. But we can't proceed without your blessing, so that's why it's number one on our list. Number two, from Depot to, from Peterson to Dogwood. Again, we're missing a bike lane on the south side of the road. We've got some work to do with CN. We've got a major water main project to do there this year, and that road is in horrible shape.
We love to read that.
I'm just, I'm on the clock. But again, that's, that's why that one's number two. We got to go in there. You know, the water main project is really only going to be responsible for, say, a meter and a half of a pavement cut there. But if you've driven that road anytime recently, specifically where Ross Road comes into it, we're barely, we're barely kind of hanging on there. And so, that's going to, that's why we've identified that one in there. You know, the CN, you know, the tail is wagging the dog a little bit. You know, we are trying to get these CN improvements done. But again, you know, we find ourselves having to drill through that crossing for a water main. So, it's going to, that's a real challenge for us, absolutely. And whether we're successful with that or not will depend on how far we go. But again, we need, we need to get in there, and we need to do that work. Number three, Ross and Arrowhead. So, the new water main kind of goes up Ross, ties into Arrowhead. Again, that whole section of road is in very poor condition, so we're going to be digging that up to kind of tie in our water main up there. Skyline from the Boulevard to Braymar, so we've got a 300-meter-long water main to do there. And we're looking at some asphalt work that's there. It's not the worst road, but we'll likely want to do at least one lane out of there, because it's not in the best shape. Again, driven by active transportation and a water main that we've got to do there. That goes into the next one, which is the Boulevard from Air to Braymar. So, we've wrapped that water main back up onto the Boulevard, where we're talking about the sidewalk there, and we tie ourselves down there. So, that's why we've identified that one. And there's some real challenges for replacing water mains on the Boulevard, because we've got services that go through all that concrete work. So, it's going to be, we're going to try to be a little bit innovative and burst those services, so we don't have to chop up the whole Boulevard on the way down. Next one, another water main capital government from Mamcom to the north end of the bridge. So, that's really a water main we're replacing, a six-inch main with a 12-inch main. So, that's going to be an interesting challenge for us. You know, the pavement on Government Road and lots of those places is only two inches thick. That was just driven by when we put those bike lanes in, and it was placed, in some cases, on fairly unsuitable soil. And so, those have kind of failed prematurely. So, again, we're just earmark some, you know, some money specific to active transportation with the sidewalk missing gap, and leverage that. And that water main project is a DCC project, so we're moving ahead on that.
So, none of that budget's coming out of the road budget, then?
We haven't, we haven't identified anything from there right now. But we did identify the money out of active transportation, so that's what I put on the list. Aristotle, we're missing the second lift, and so, that was, I believe, discussed in council as far as the budget request from that, where it's going to be paid. But it's not out of the existing road or water, is what I understand, so we've included it in the list to be tendered. Next up, Victoria. So, when we did the decommissioning of the lift stations two years ago, we only put two inches back because we knew that center point was coming, and they've done a lot of work in the road there, and so, we've retained some of that budget to do the second lift of that project when it wraps up. Patching, so a big one. You know, everybody's seen the destruction of the frost and the extended cold temperatures had on the road network this year. And we've just earmarked $75,000, recognizing that operations, patching budget's not going to do the trick. And we're going to start patching tomorrow. The plant's going to fire up, and we're going to, we're going to get after it. We're going to, we're going to exhaust that operating budget first, and that's going to start tomorrow. So, we've already recognized that it's going to take more than what these guys have, so we've earmarked some section out of the capital plan for that. Next up's crack sealing. So, in some cases, we've got some roads that are in reasonable shape, but we've got longitudinal cracks in the cold joints in the center of the road. And there's an opportunity for us to do some crack sealing there, to just kind of preserve the integrity of these roads and not lose them further.
So, on those two, how much, how much cracks have they normally done in the past?
Zero, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, that's good to see then there. Is that enough? You know, I-
It's about $3 a meter, so, you know, I, we haven't done a full inventory of it, but we know that there are some roads that are, that have been paved and they're not too distant. Historical sense of things like Tantalus Road, Centennial, some of these roads that are in actually decent shape, but they've got big cracks around down the middle of the roads from the cold joint, from when they were paving, and so, this would be an opportunity to get that. It's about $3 a meter for a crack sealing.
Yeah, this has been one that's been highlighted to me as something we have not, it's been deficient in the past, and if we give a lot more crack sealing, we would be sure that our roads would go a lot longer, and we're not doing enough. So, I just want to make sure we're, I was really pleased to see it on here, because it had been on before. So, I want to make sure it's enough, and that, and that we are taking a comprehensive approach to crack sealing and shoulder preservation that can really actually extend the life of our roads a lot longer, and we don't have to do as much patching as we are in redoing this year.
Absolutely. So, Cleveland Avenue, just, you know, as part of our street state upgrade and the interface into Main Street, it's going to require some additional paving in there. And, you know, based on some of the preliminary costs with some of the stuff that's up to, like, Cleveland's out to tender right now and closes this week, and we'll have a better idea. But we're going to need to utilize some of that paving budget for the interface into Main Street there, and some of the curb bulwarks that are required. And again, we've got a little strategic connection for the IT guys to get across Cleveland on Main Street, to get them into the library. The following four roads on there are just straight out of the pavement management plan. So, you know, Midill, Buckley to Garibaldi, Discovery Way, doesn't have its second lift. Naren, so one of the things, Miller-Capilano, we've talked about this in council for a few years, just is the micro-surfacing that's been done on the highway. They've offered to do a road for free for us, and so, we identified Naren from Kentire to the cul-de-sac as just to kind of try it out and see how it goes and, and learn more about it. Because we don't, we don't have a lot of experience outside of what we've seen in the highway, and we know that some of that's been better and some of that's not been so good. So, this is an opportunity for us to try.
Is that the sound deadening type of paving?
No, that's what you see, like, if you've seen, you know, coming out of Britannia, they've done that hill a few times. Alice Lake, they've done it in front of the provincial park on the highway a few times, and it's a, it's micro-surfacing, so it's very, it's just a few millimeters of cement, bitumen, and sand. And this is a technology that comes out of the East Coast of the United States, and Miller-Capilano's using a lot for Highway 99, and they're doing it for other municipalities as well. So, this is an opportunity for us to try without a huge, you know, kind of capital investment in it. And then, and then Newport is on there as well. So, I mean, that's what we've identified. A lot of these are tied into the capital, they're tied into active transportation. And, you know, really, what we want to do is have that discussion with you to ensure that we get more or less the authorization to proceed with tendering, because we're going to need to get this one up the door fairly quickly. And because it overlaps so much with our capital plans with water, sewer, and active transportation, it's really a good part of the conversation today.
I was going to move the list.
Oh, so was I. Go ahead.
And then, so I'll move that this list be approved. Go ahead, if you want to speak to it. Yep, I'm with Doug. I think, hopefully, this is the last time that paving list has to come back to us. I'm not sure if it's the best use of council's time. But I do think we need another study to be updated, and hopefully, that's in the budget next year, and hopefully, we top up our budget next year, because we've short shifted paving the last few years in the budget. But there are so many moving targets, and I think with the active transportation plan, that's our way to make sure that all the docks are connecting versus looking at paving separately. And I think, you know, Patty spoke earlier about, it didn't used to happen that our departments were talking to each other. We continually have evidence that is happening now. But a lot more faith that the lists that are coming to us are the right ones to be drawn. I'm happy to support that list.
And it's totally off-topic, but I just wondered if you heard anything from Miller-Cap about what they, when they plan to do some resurfacing on the highway on 99?
You know what, we'll definitely talk to them, but I think they've got more than micro-surfacing to do. I think that- Well, I mean, we're no different, you know. True, like, we've, we've seen a lot of damage to the roads this year. And, you know, some of the ones, you know, we become aware of areas where for decades we've been doing overlays, and we have 12 inches of asphalt. And for us, it's not about a simple repair, it's about, you know, it's a full reconstruction.
Thanks. I totally agree with this. You know, before, we used to have fight for active in the previous council. And I think that what you saw, you'd always see engineer coming forward with the road paving, and then we had no active transportation budget. So, it was really difficult pitting those two things against each other. And I'm totally happy to support. I think this is really well thought out. I don't think we need to study roads. I think our staff's observational capabilities are equally as relevant, and that the previous study definitely informs our roads. And that using that information already gives staff a really great look at, I think you know, I think our departments know what is needed in our community, and even know that what's got 12 inches pavement and what needs resurfacing versus what doesn't. I'd be afraid to put more money, I'd rather spend more money that's on the study and put it into the paving budget. If there's an extra money that needs to go into the paving budget, I'd rather do that and give staff the resources they need to carry on other than funding another truck to go around with. It's actually the, it's not, you can say it's scientific, but having looked into it, it's not. It's point surfaces that you change no matter, you know, you could, it's like looking at anything in isolation and extrapolating the data over a large surface area. I would much, if I was going to look at extrapolated data, I'd rather your opinion. So, it's on how to spend our paving money. So, because I think you do, I've, I've seen you work over five years now, and I really do trust your opinion on what roads need work next. And as well, we have to also take community input, so that, doesn't matter how much data we have, we're still going to be, you know, responding to the community's needs, responding to how we get our little plans together. So, I'm really impressed with how staff has collaborated to make these two plans work together, so I appreciate that. Jason?
I do actually appreciate having the list before, because I'm to tender, allowing, if they're just in case, if there's any, you know, things that come up. So, I think it's a good, useful exercise, and, you know, it's the way it's laid out, it's very logical, and it's really easy to evaluate, so I think that's great. And it just helps us too, right, if we're talking to people in the community and we know, oh, no, your road's getting paved like next year, or no, it's not, and this is why, then it helps everybody understand better what's going on, so it's great.
Yeah, gets it out with the public, these, these public people can see it. It's not just about informing council, it's about informing the public, too. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, on the 16 other hand, I'm going to call the question, and-
Did you do a motion on the application?
No, you don't care. So, this one is on the paving budget, so we'll do this, but I'm going to keep the council's direction on there. And this one as well, I think we know it. I'll call the question, I'll just favor, pose, motion carries. Move that, consider staff, begin tendering process for active transportation projects. Who by council should, else who by council can't? Yes.
Just for clarification, that, I take it as items one to 19 inclusive on the list?
Yeah.
That's above the lines, I would-
Yeah, and I think-
That includes that one?
Yes. Yeah, sorry, the $700,000 budget includes the design work and the items that were listed as above the line.
And I think you heard the conversation about if we find, we're looking, so, I don't know if you want to motion about that, but we are currently approving the tendering for that first chunk, with the proviso that we're looking into the funding for that one. Okay, I'll call the question. Did we do a question, is that it?
Yes.
So, the motion is for items one to 19 inclusive on the list?
Is to go to tendering on those ones?
Yes.
Doesn't mean that we may not use those other-
No, no, appreciate that.
I'll call the question, I'll favor, pose, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we'll, we'll move quickly into the downtown truck route study. Now, we just, we brought this back because there was some questions by council about, do we need to keep the Westminster Street overpass in the report? Is that correct? That's essentially the focus of the conversation? Or was there anything else that you want to?
No, I mean, I think, I think the main thing was that, I think we want to be careful about not overstepping the scope of what the truck route study was meant to be. And we certainly don't, don't want to, want the truck route to be trying to answer future transportation planning questions, because that's a much bigger and different discussion. So, and I think as well, the not the, the truck route study is not, is not meant to be being prescriptive about future road network for Squamish. It's pointed out some potentials, although those were mostly actually, they all came out of previous studies. I'm not, I'm not sure how further to alleviate that, but I, but I do know that we are this year and next year going to be doing those transportation plans. And I think that will sort of complete this discussion, like, the truck route is all, has kind of been the beginning. It's pointed out some things that are very useful, and they're going to really help inform and set the groundwork for future transportation planning, and then-
And I think we asked it to come back to me in the hole, because there were questions about the one overpass. I did have a conversation with Mike Hodgson about it, because big landowner down there, partners with Squamish Nation. He seemed to, this is what he said to me, he had no problem leaving in the transportation study. He thought that it was worth keeping in for future consideration. So, he didn't see it as a problem, he didn't think that Squamish Nation was going to say no right off the bat. He didn't think that he has a landowner down there- So he, he didn't see it as a problem. He didn't think that Squamish Nation was gonna say no right off the bat. He didn't think that he has a landowner down there was gonna say no. And he said hypothetically, it doesn't matter. Leave it in. It doesn't impact either way. That's what he said to me. Counselor, as you, you brought this up in the meeting, so I'll.
I did. I'm the bill. So, um, and the difficulty I had, I guess, is, is, uh, and I went through the council at my first term about 2010 or 11, somewhere in there. Uh, there was a conscious decision. I don't know if there's a resolution, but there was a conscious decision made, uh, by planning, which I think council accepted. To abandon that option, which had been kicked around for, I don't know, probably half a dozen years at least before that. To allow planning for the oceanfront to see about that particular option. Because everything I've heard about that kind of a bridge, uh, it might be quite high. There's long landing scripts, uh, more or less, or, or grades to, to, to make the thing work. And so anybody building there would have to take the possibility of a bridge going by and sort of three stories up or two stories up. And how do you deal with all that in your planning? And so when I saw it in there, I, I was actually a little bit surprised to frankly, um, to see it in the, in the plan. Uh, it's still considered an option. And to endorse a plan that has that as an option, even though it's not the near-term option, but it's an eventual option. That's the way I interpreted it. What does that mean for planning? Because this whole area right at the moment is kind of a clean slate. In the sense that, you know, part of it would impact, for example, waterfront landing perhaps. Unless the whole thing is taken over by, by the First Nation on the other side of the channel. Part of it would impact, um, potentially the oceanfront developer. And there's two other new developers. Who have lands immediately adjacent to that. And maybe there's others, um, because if it gets all the way over Third Avenue, there's more property owners and. And you have off ramps and all kinds of issues and turnings and so forth. And so what does it really mean? Because I don't think, I mean, if we are serious about that plan, it doesn't make any sense to me to endorse a development today. That will require us to expropriate a finished building 20 years from now. You know, I think we'd have to think that far ahead and kind of create some areas or contemplate a bridge going there. Otherwise. It really isn't an option at all. And so I, I think, you know, just for all the development that's happening right now on most sides of the channel. I was looking for more clarity. Either you say, yeah, that's an option. Or you say, no, it's not an option. Um, and we plan and develop accordingly.
Well, I have a, um, a couple of things that I want to respond to that on. One is that. The, the Westminster label was chosen as sort of a south bridge option. And I, I. Like I, I would hesitate to say that it even was meant to be aligned with, with Westminster Street. However, when you work with engineers, they need specifics. That's how they work. And so an alignment needed to be chosen to sort of proceed with even having a discussion about geotechnical and archaeological and other potential and environmental impacts. Having said that, I don't think that's necessarily the alignment. So we're so, we're so far away from even understanding where that, that bridge, if it ever happened, might be. So, and I agree, that creates uncertainty with planning and creates uncertainty with development, which I don't think anybody likes. Having said that. If I look at how much Squamish has changed, like you're talking about a decision that was made in 2010 or ish. Look at how much things have changed in Squamish even in seven years. You know, we're, and I guess my point is that I don't want us to, to close off any options. I mean, I don't even necessarily want us to completely close off the western route option. Having said that, I still can't figure out how we're gonna bypass Cleveland in the highway. Like, like that Cleveland highway intersection is gonna become the bane of our existence soon. And Whistler is already screaming at us about it. So you know what I mean? Like we've got a lot, there's a lot of moving parts going on here. And, and so I don't really want to close off any options. And yet I'm optimistic that we will solve our transportation problems more cleverly than by simply building more roadways and bridges. That's my hope. And, and I really, I genuinely believe that. And that's what I'm working towards. I'm not working towards building big bridges. That is not what I'm about for sure. So. But, but I think we'll resolve a lot of this with actual transportation planning, not just truck group discussions.
Do you mind if I go with Chris and then you can follow up on that after the training?
I, I just wanted to reiterate the point that we went into this to solve the truck problem in Squamish. And we sort of discovered that Squamish doesn't have as much of a problem with trucks as trucks have a problem in Squamish. We, we, we have some fixing to do of, of some, some intersections and everything in the short term. To make our chosen short-term routes work. Um, we have some ideas about, uh, number of crossings probably coming in. But the conclusion of the, we could have stopped the report basically at the trucks will go wherever the traffic drives it. We'll build a bridge over the mountain blind channel if traffic requires it sometime in the future. If we're unsuccessful in reducing traffic flows and aligning the Cleveland 99 and doing all this, and we're forced to build a bridge. And it'll be traffic that will drive it, not trucks. I, I don't really have a, a big problem with just backing off on, on the requirement or softening the language on it. I, I don't think we need to, I know we don't have the budget to, I don't think we need to really do a lot of detailed land planning and, and. Consultations with other governments and that sort of thing at this point where a bridge, we're all trying really hard to avoid building. So I, I think may, maybe we needed to soften the language on the south bridge crossing. And instead of the Westminster crossing is, is a possible long-term solution. And, and just keeping it in there that if we need to build that bridge, we have to make sure that we build it to a standard where the trucks can use it. Cause that's where we would choose to put trucks. Um, and just kind of leave it at that.
Doug, do you want to follow up or do you want to mull that over again?
Well, I, I guess, um. And I, I'm, I guess that's sort of my question. I mean, what happens if we just take it out, we stop talking about Westminster? I mean, if we start talking about somewhere in the southern continental, maybe that's even more uncertain because now we're going across these simple lands and what does that mean? So, um, I mean, the advantage of Westminster is at least we own it. So, um, at the moment. But, um, if we just kind of soften the language or took it out, um, entirely. Because it would be traffic driven and we would just have to kind of deal with the traffic at that time. This might be 30 or 40 years from now. Um, whatever options might be available to us. It might be tunnel. It might be from some other place. Does that really affect the report? Is it? I, I guess I'm just concerned about, you know, the landowners down there and how, how the planning department would actually deal with that. You know, if I was a planner, I'm not, but if I was a planner and, and we had a study on file that had been endorsed by council. Said that, that 20 years from now, we might have a bridge across from Westminster Street or some other place on the oceanfront. How do you plan for that? Um, and do you allow people to put six and eight and 10-story buildings in its way? I don't know. Honestly. So that was, I guess that's the concern I have with that is, uh, if it's an option. At least we've identified a right of way. So people aren't gonna build right on Westminster Street, uh, but we might be building right beside it. We might want to swap Westminster Street for some other place just because it makes better land use center, parks or other amenities or whatever. So I, I just, you know, the uncertainty, I guess, kind of bothers me because I think that area is kind of, well, I know it is. It's actively being developed or thought about being developed. And so, um, how would you deal with that in the planning department? If we left that in there, that, yep, someday that's, uh, that's the next choice. So after Pemberton.
So, I mean, could you have some confidence in the idea that we're gonna have this discussion in the next two years? Because we do have budgets in place to do transportation, first track, traffic modeling, then transportation planning and looking at our entryway. Like from the highway to downtown? Cause I'm assuming an entryway study from the highway to downtown, we're dressing that is gonna talk about some of those things?
If I can just, just.
I don't want to get too much.
No, I'll make the last point. I mean, I, Chris is right. You know, this thing is, it's traffic. It's not just trucks that are gonna be using this thing. So it will be built to respond probably to a need, a traffic need, a general traffic need as opposed to just a truck need. So if you're talking about just a truck study, uh, would you ever even identify that as a truck route? Except that if it's gonna be there and it's gonna be built anyway because of all the cars are taking it. Then maybe, yeah, we'll run trucks over it too. So, um, build up to that standard. So. I, I guess I'm going back to, do we have to identify it specifically as a truck route?
Well, I think the whole point is that because we don't have, our, our truck volume isn't adequate to. To require a whole building of a new road system regardless of where it, or road, regardless of where it is. That the trucks will logically go where a new tra, a new traffic route, a new, in fact, I would think. Simply just in terms of efficiency, you'd always want your trucks doing the shortest distance from wherever their destination is to the highway or, or their other destination. So I mean, that's.
I, I, I think, I mean, you guys said it, this is being driven, this will be driven by traffic. It's not gonna be driven by trucks. So if we ever get a bridge at the south end along the Westminster Road Redway or not. In this, it's saying if traffic ever determines we need something there, it could be the truck route. It's not saying the truck route is gonna build that bridge. So, uh, from my point of view, um, I mean, you have high rises beside Gerga Expressway within arms distance of a. Three-story expressway right through downtown. I mean, uh, downtown Toronto. So I mean, things get built beside bridges. It happens, you see, you see humilia. I don't think, for me, that's not necessarily a problem. And I think it opens the door to say, look, we're, this is a possibility in the future. We've got lots of things that we're sort of trying to plan for the day to implement tomorrow. Potentially, maybe not. Um, maybe we're gonna be flying around in drones and we don't need roads anymore. But, um. We're, that's a hypothetical. So anyway, this, I think that's the thing is that it's, it's traffic driven. And that if traffic determines we need something at the south end of a bridge, that could be the truck route. Is what this document is saying. Not saying build this bridge to build a truck. I know it's a semantic lifte, but, um. Karen and Ted?
So I'm okay with leaving it in, but I don't mind softening the language to sort of say it's self-channel crossing. It's not the Westminster. And then I think that will be dependent on thorough transportation planning. Don't buy that the street is long. And it's, like you said, it's in our longer-term financial plan. It's there. Um, so, but I think, I think people have to have the concept that, um, it could be sitting out there because there might be right of ways that we want to protect in some of the developments that, that come in. We might want developers like Michael Hodgson and the oceanfront thinking about, ooh, would I leave room for that or how would I connect to that or, you know? So I, I think it needs to be out there as a possibility. But, uh, but I think everyone recognizes that we can't plan for something. To such a degree today that might not happen for 30 years. And somewhere in there are, the way we use transportation might shift entirely. Which could be a game changer about how we move goods and people. So. You know, I, I think it's reasonable to leave it in there. Um, I don't think it commits us to anything and I don't think it takes away from our planning efforts. It possibly helps.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I mean, I like the idea of softening the language, you know, a southern route. And, you know, in 20 years, I think we'll go down on a bridge possibly, you know, I mean, we didn't look at towns. And, you know, like this one, what gets me is we're going right across First Nations land and that's like. Not a biggie. Um, so you said, close any options. At this point, why close any options? Yet we take the west route out. So I don't think we should take that route out either. You know, parallel in the railroad tracks, the seventh avenue connector.
We're not calling for that.
I know.
We have a motion. Actually did.
But I had to let everyone know what I was talking about. So, you know, I mean, why take that one out? Leave that one in too. And, and so, uh, you know, and I was, so in, in hindsight, I was kind of disappointed with this study because. It does a truck use study for trucks that we don't have too many of. It's kind of like, you know, in hindsight, you're thinking, well, that's weird. We spent a hundred grand and find out there's not enough trucks to really do a study on. And so we could have gathered a lot more. The final thing is what, you know, like you say, engineers have to follow roads. That also blows my mind because when I think of the traffic problems that we're having. I think of, gee, just think if Laura's lane didn't veer over into clear Cleveland Avenue yet, just think if it went straight and then parallel into the intersection. We widen the intersection, widen the bridge and a quick getaway salary. And there's one little piece of property that's got a few stores on it. I mean, if we incorporated that and took the road straight through Pemberton, it could have, Pemberton could be a straight shot out of town. Plying with anything. But we don't look at that because it's a problem. Anyway. I, no, no, take Pemberton Avenue straight through the store at the end, you know?
Laura's name.
Uh, Laura's name, sorry. Laura's name. If you take Laura's lane straight through and put another lane on 99 and, and Cleveland. You'd have two dedicated roads going itself. And I'm just throwing that out there because in my mind, I think that's where it ties in. But that's a bottleneck. So you softened the language to say southern route. I'm happy with that. And, uh, I think we should leave. Other roads in as well. Why take it out?
Chris?
I think two, two separate points to, uh, to respond to there. First of all, I think, um. Maybe Laura's comment about following, following roads may be a, a little misunderstood. I think she meant just that we needed to, in order to do the study, we need to define each place where we're gonna do the study. And, um, certainly we build roads, places where there weren't roads and, and, um, everything's on the table. So, uh, I won't talk about, I, I wouldn't want to talk about specific property in an open meeting necessarily, but, uh. The, the other point, um, on the western connectors. I think the conclusions of the study are that it doesn't make sense to build a western connector as a truck route. Someday, someday, exactly. Someday, maybe somebody, someday in the future. Will decide that it makes sense to, to put traffic down the western connector and it wasn't put trucks there. We don't anticipate that. It doesn't seem to connect the places that need to be connected. Um, and so, you know, at this point, we didn't. We're, we're not really looking at that. Uh, but it, it, outside the scope of the truck study. Anything is possible. It may, it may make sense to put, put a road down.
Just to follow up on that. Well, you know, so you're coming from Whistler and you want to go to the south tip of SODC. You can take the west connector right down to SODC, right down to the south end. You can skip the whole downtown. And if you're down in SODC and you want to go north to Whistler, you can do the same thing. I mean, it does work. It is a, unfortunately, we looked at trucks. We didn't throw traffic.
This was a truck study. This was a truck study.
Yeah, I know. But you know, I, I'm just saying that we're making all these decisions on our traffic patterns. On a truck study that says we don't need anything for trucks.
I think that's exactly what staff said we're not doing.
Okay. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping to, to, to sort of address this and wrap, and wrap this up to some degree. So. The interesting thing is that the western route is not recommended. But fortunately it is in the study and it's not coming out. And there's all this information on archaeological, environmental impact. Um, and geotechnical stuff that's in this study that's going to help. It's gonna become information that belongs to us. That we can then use to inform any future transportation planning that we do. So it's actually, no matter what. We say, or, and also too, it's a study. So it's not a plan. This isn't actually telling us where to put things. It's just saying, hey, we went and looked at all these different routes. And this is what we came up with. And here's some cost estimates and get your head around, like it just, it's just helping us to get our head around what the possibilities are. And so I, I mean, we, we could go back and change. Westminster to like a south blind channel crossing or, or something like that. Having said that, like I said, those archaeological, environmental, other studies that were done related to that. They did look at that alignment because they had to, they had to pin themselves somewhere. You know, you can't, you can't have a geotechnical assessment about, oh, sort of this area down here, the south end of downtown, right? Like it. Anyway, so I think it's all useful. Um, we can, we could move recommendations around. Having said that, this is what the experts came up with. So I'm reluctant to go against what urban systems has to say, regardless of how it makes us feel. I mean, don't get me wrong. That's, that's worthy. It's also not. It's also not maybe what we asked for. So I think it was still, my point is, I think it was still a useful exercise in all this information we get to take with us on our on-road journey.
And as we said, it's not being taken out. It's just in the report, it rationalizes why it's not recommended. If any of those things change within the rationalization in the future, you can change your plans to orient that, right?
Well, I guess I'm stuck on, I'm thinking traffic, not truck. And this is specifically about trucks. And so, you know, but, you know, as a side, you know, we're with the trucks. It's saying we don't really need anything for trucks, but when it gets really busy in twenty years, we'll have to eat a bridge.
We may.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, so anyway, I'm okay. I won't be here to see it. It doesn't, it just, yeah, it just.
Cryogenics by the way. I think we are getting sort of stuck in the this is going to solve all our problems. So this was very focused on moving trucks around. And as this guy said.
If someone wants to build on the corner of Third and Westminster, we're not going to say to them, well, you better just hold off on that because we don't know how that off-ramp is going to might take out your building. I mean, would planning say that?
I think now, knowing what I know now, when people come into a pre-op to talk to me about sites, I'm like, hey, by the way, you just might want to know. Because I figure, I mean, the whole point of that process is you might as well find out, we might as well give the army even as much information as possible besides developers. Once they saw their building, they don't care.
That's true. Okay, so this is a truck study. It's not a traffic study. There's still lots more work to be done. It's articulating a rationale for why these are the ones that need to be graded and why these ones don't, under today's appreciation and understanding. Currently, I think I'm hearing the ability to report as is. Okay? That's all we need, right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless we're going to change it. So this will come back to a regular council meeting and we can do this all on our own. We can change it if. Okay, thank you. So I want to take five minutes to do this. We did ask council to send some resolutions. And we had discussed over the course of the last year, some resolutions with regard to the environmental assessment process. So there's two proposed motions in front of council totally open for tweaking and amending. One has to do with essentially the fact that we're kind of forced to go through these processes, but we have no fees or funding mechanisms to help us through our staff, through our public engagement to actually pay for this stuff. And that actually costs our taxpayers to have to go through these processes. And so with the first recommendation, fundamentally, it's about, so on the, the provincial government has a whole bunch of fees for these processes, for the fee application, the normal application process, and then if there's any amended process, they have a whole fee schedule for what they charge proponents. And what this motion is saying, add a fee schedule for local governments so we can make sure we have the ability to respond, do our due diligence, and engage our public. So they basically asking to put in their fee schedule, local government fee. And I think we looked it up online. It said there's a simple, there's a.
There's typical, which is the highest.
Typical, which is the highest, with the middle one, complex, a little bit complex, and then simple. And so basically, we're saying plug in a local government fee in there so we can actually backfill our staff or compensate and actually recover our costs on environmental assessment process. That's what the first motion, so make sure the intent, the wording of the first motion meets that intent. And if it's not clear, we can tweak it. The second one was on the fact that these big projects, and we're just doing this based on our experience through Gerberly Squamish and W O N G and some others. But ultimately, it's for all the processes. And the second one deals with the fact that these projects get parceled out into, here's a little hydro bit, here's a little navigation bit, here's a fortis bit, here's a this. And there's, these projects aren't done with in a comprehensive way. And because of that, you don't get the cumulative impacts of environment, socioeconomic, use cases, community impact. So what we're asking the government here is if you have a project, all the moving parts to the project need to be evaluated as one project. Because locked that project, none of the other stuff would be happening. So that's what the intent of the second resolution is. And we didn't get any other submissions from council. Rob and I were trying to rack our brain because we thought council had talked about one other one, but we couldn't.
What's that? About the same kits. We only have five to, from line of four for.
Okay, so we asked council to send in motion. So if you could word something and put it in front of council. I'll hold your food, I'll eat your food while you do that. You can do my turn. So if you could write up some wording so we know what we're doing. So any comments on these to get at, Jason?
Well, the second resolution in the second paragraph. Just wondering, the term socioeconomic and how like maybe we need to be more precise by what we mean by that? If we're going to be asking an environmental assessment to take that into consideration. It's a pretty vague term.
It is, and technically, it's, the environmental assessment process is supposed to, it is designed to touch on that anyway, but we can be more specific in that term. It was more of just to give examples of how, for example, you're looking at fortis in and of itself and its workforce associated with fortis and maybe camps associated with fortis. And W O N G, it has workforce issues and potentially work camps and da-da-da. But they're not comprehensively presented to the community, so we don't know the cumulative impact of them. So we can add in more examples. We wanted to give a bit of a sense of these are the types of things that are being overlooked because everything's being processed up. So, yeah, I totally hear what you're saying. It's a bit of a vague term, but just trying to convey the cumulative impacts on a whole bunch of different streams are overlooked when projects are carved up into little pieces and not presented comprehensively together. So.
So just to respond to that, like, I just, I don't know. I think it kind of takes it away from the power of the resolution because I think that that if, in terms of.
We could take all the examples, though.
No, I mean, use cases, cumulative environmental impacts, and we might even want to add in greenhouse gas emissions or climate change. I just find that the term socioeconomic, I think it can mean lots of different things to different people. And maybe there's another mechanism other than the environmental assessment process whereby the local government or the province should be evaluating those impacts and not allowing it to be, not forcing it all in there. Because I'm thinking about the expertise involved in a environmental assessment process and perhaps the people who work in that realm are not as proficient in measuring, you know, some of these other things. I, that's just my personal opinion and.
Is it the term socioeconomic? Could we use social impacts?
Social and economic.
Separate in that or?
I mean, I would be okay with, I don't know. I'm not sure.
Well, keeping in mind it's supposed to be an environmental assessment as opposed to a social assessment or a business case assessment or a health assessment or something like that. It may be that we want to pin those things down. I know just, you know, in the L N G staff committee, we had most difficult in trying to deal with that particular issue. What would be the effect on the tourism industry, for example, of a development like that? And we never really got to an answer. It was just pure speculation because we really couldn't find anybody that could come and talk to us about it. Well, and so, so it does kind of, I tend to agree, Jason, it does kind of clutter it up. I think we have to remember this is an environmental impact. And it's like, it's like the same thing we've gone through with gas in our minds, you know, is it a real estate deal or a skiing deal? And is that, is that really the subject of environmental impact, which is supposed to be the impact on the environment? Or is that kind of a business planning, some other type of issue that maybe doesn't belong in there and is part of some other analysis on some other part of the permitting process? So I think, I mean, I tend to agree with the idea that the whole thing kind of is lumped together because I think that's certainly one of the problems is we're dealing with three or four different issues. With wood fiber, for example, we're dealing with fortis, we're dealing with hydro. I think navigation was somehow caught up in there. But in any event, that was an issue. To kind of look at the whole thing in its entirety, any impact, any effect of that project, including related infrastructure, should have been considered kind of as one lump. But to get into all these other things, I think we still have to remember it's an environmental impact, environmental assessment.
Well, I mean, I like something in there for the social part with it because, you know, just to be extreme, let's say you had four drains coming through your town today. Maybe ask for an environmental assessment. You have to do something with the social input. I mean, I like the word social staying in there somehow.
Thanks, Karen.
And it is the environmental assessment, but there was the five pillars that then we, all value components get weighed against, right? Which are geological, social, heritage, there's.
Can we mention that in it? Can you mention the five pillars and name them all?
I think that's, some of the problems that the name says environmental assessment, but it's not. Environmental is not just, environmental means a very broad definition of environmental. It means social, heritage, all those things.
I like that.
Well, that, those are the five pillars. It's a bit of a misnomer. The name is misleading.
Just quote the, quote the five pillars?
We could, absolutely. Can you, do you have one there? Any other questions? So we can, I think the idea of this is to have sort of practical sort of things, but just putting the five pillars, I think that probably is. Any other, any, anybody have any issues? Susan, do you want to read that?
Sure.
I always like to do when people are including their mouth.
She makes more sense.
I do make more sense when I'm on there.
I'm going to lose it. Don't edit it.
Whereas the corridor experiences a higher than average number of sexual assaults. And whereas sane kids are not accessible to the city sky corridor, that the provincial government, new funding from the Health Ministry to the Justice Ministry and consider funding comprehensive access to sane kids in communities lacking forensic services.
So I think.
Then there could be words with the.
Yeah, the only thing I'm thinking is resolutions that are very specific to a region or area can get thrown out with the bad word.
That the provincial, well, yeah, that's a, I think, take care of the city sky.
Yeah, I think just as where, whereas, so to make these, the whereas is generic to sexual assault in province-wide. And then your motion actually speaks to business to be funded.
Yes, exactly. And through the justice, right now, the ministry funds it through the healthcare budget, which is.
So maybe that's, that's your whereas.
That's exactly.
Maybe that should be in the whereas. Whereas the ministry funds this through X budget and this is really a wide budget issue, they're going to be resolved at that.
So whereas the ministry currently funds sane kids through the healthcare, through the Ministry of Health, and whereas sane kids are, and should be in justice.
Are for prosecutorial purposes and blah blah.
And then I think the motion.
Yeah, so if we don't make it reasonably specific, then, and then maybe in this one. Yeah, no, I think just leaving it here.
From the Health, the Justice Ministry and consider funding comprehensive access to sane kids in communities lacking forensic services. That's general.
Anyone have a problem with that?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, exactly. Comprehensive access, so twenty-four-hour access. Comprehensive twenty-four-hour access.
Okay, so no one has a problem with that? Can you, can you type it up? Send it to Terry and then Terry will read it out for everybody.
Yes, Karen. On the previous motions, five pillars are economic, social, environment, health, heritage.
Okay, economic, social.
Environment.
Environment.
Health.
Health.
Heritage.
Heritage. Perfect. So we'll take out, including use case da-da-da, and put in something that that, considering all of the five pillars of the environmental assessment process, economic, social, environmental, health and heritage. Sound good? Okay?
Sounds like you know what we're talking about.
Okay, so, well, Susan typed that out. With those changes, maybe I'll just get a motion that we forward these two resolutions down on L G A with da-da, second by Peter. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Rob?
I'm just wondering, Mayor Heinzman, if you want to bring them forward tonight for the red case, so we can get them all. That would be absolutely.
Sue, do you need a motion that affect, and that they be brought forward? That was part of the motion to get here.
Yeah.
Brought forward through tonight's special meeting. And Councilor Chappell is just firing that off. Does anyone have a concern that just approving the agenda, it's going to come back to tonight's agenda in its final form and we can clear the problem for the weekend? Okay, move that, that this motion be forwarded to the L M O G A. The second there, moved by Councilor Chappell, second by Councilor Black and Gold. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Move termination, move by Councilor Kent, second by Councilor Riley. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.